I know that we will eventually have other members joining us as we go. But we do have a quorum, so we're going to proceed. So I'm going to call to order the regular meeting of the Nishoba Regional School Committee at 6:34 PM. And if you would, join me with and say pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, in the soul with liberty and justice for all.
All right, everybody. So I just wanted to let everyone know that our superintendent is going to be joining us shortly, but he is MDC, working with several legislators in forwarding the goals of Massachusetts Public Schools. And so in his stead is our Assistant Superintendent Laura Friend, a very worthy person. So thank you, Laura, for spearheading the meeting. All right, everybody. So first item is public comment. And not seeing any public presence. So we're going to keep going and move to the consent agenda, and I'll turn to Amy for a motion.
I move to approve the consent agenda of May 14th, 2025.
I'll second that. And is there any discussion? All right. So because we're not with Kirk yet, Alita, do you still want to do a roll call? You don't need to. So all those in favor, please raise your hand. Consent agenda. All right, that's everybody. Thank you, guys. When Kirk does finally get on, he's out of prudence to do roll call votes. Okay? Yeah. All right. So school committee chairperson update is next. I just wanted to give a quick reminder to all the subcommittee chairs, some of whom are not here. But if you are a subcommittee chair, can you please make sure that you get your minutes to Alita from all of the meetings this past year so that those can get posted, talking about the ones that you've approved? And try to wrap up the year by approving the final ones. Now, I would like to take a quick moment to thank a member of our committee who this is going to be her final in-person meeting, and that is Amy Vessels from Fulton. Thank you, Amy. Your name.
We are ever appreciative of citizen volunteers, and this is a small gift to you from all of us for all of your service. Thank you. Good luck.
So for those of you who know, Amy and I work together. She is my work sister, and we started on the very first day together many moons ago. And when she saw the opening on this school committee, I could not help but convince you. And I was so happy that you said yes. When she said yes, I was shocked. I was like, oh, my God, she said yes. And then she ran and won her seat. So she's stepping back now, but Amy, we really appreciate you doing this.
It's been a great experience. I learned a lot. I enjoyed it.
So I know Amy will stay active. She's obviously a Bolton resident, and her kids are still in school, so it makes Amy. We do have a gift for Ava, but we'll wait on that.
She's on her way.
Okay. So if there's no objection, I'm going to ask everybody to allow me to move the student representative report perhaps to after the superintendent's. So I'm going to turn it over to Assistant Superintendent Friend to give us that report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So the first night announcement this evening, I'm going to ask.
Sorry.
Hi, Ava.
Hi.
We're so glad that you made it.
I know. I'm sorry.
No, don't worry. We are all running really late because there's crazy traffic in our beautiful little town. So thanks for coming.
Of course.
You are actually at a perfect spot to give your last student representative report.
Oh, perfect.
So you feel like you have caught your breath and then take a go.
Yes. Okay. So starting off with AP testing, all the AP tests this year were computer-based, and the testing has gone smoothly and will be finished by this Friday. Also, all the English classes have been visiting the Topping Off Bean to sign it. I'm really excited. I'm going to sign it tomorrow. And then for senior week, we have sunset and movie night on May 20th and field day on our last day, the 23rd. And the baseball game versus Clinton was held at Polar Park on Monday. It went really well. I didn't get to go, but I heard it was really fun. Actually, Superintendent Downing threw out the first ceremonial page. Yeah. The Relay for Life was taking place on May 17th, and since May is Mental Health Awareness Month, all the spring sports are hosting their Mental Health Awareness Games next week. And then teams are also starting to celebrate their senior nights as, like, the spring season comes to an end. For student awards and recognitions, the French Art and Seal of Biliteracy Awards are included in the newsletter. And some art award highlights, Sidney Rigby and A.J. Tuck won some art awards. Sidney Rigby won a silver key for an oil painting inspired by homelessness in America. And A.J. Tuck won a gold key for experimental short film about memory loss, a silver key for short film Straight Drummer exploring love and lust, and another silver key for a photo called Sacred Spine, excuse me, depicting medieval church and architecture. That's a lot. So, yeah.
All right. Any questions for the student representative report? All right. So I'm going to hit pause there. And Ava, we want to take a minute to thank you because I think this is going to be your last in-person meeting with the school committee. Your time here has been invaluable, and we have watched you grow as a leader, and it's impressive.
Thank you.
Can you remind the committee where you're off to next year?
I'm playing lacrosse at Nichols next year. Or this year, I guess.
Well, congratulations, Ava. We have this small gift that is a token of our appreciation that we wanted to give to you and appreciate so much for everything that you've done with our school. Ava, any words of wisdom for future generations or anybody watching? What is your role on the school committee to you? Do you have a real pressure?
I think I would just say, like, well, for me, getting into student government was probably the best thing I ever did. Like, I always say, if I told myself at the beginning of high school that I would be doing this, I'd probably laugh because, like, I was never interested in this. But honestly, like, getting into school council, getting into school committee has really opened a lot of opportunities for me to make connections with important people and really gain a lot of knowledge and especially become that bridge for students to, like, hire admin. So I think that a lot of, like, everyone should get into it. It's awesome. I'm really excited for Ryan next year, too.
Yeah. So I was going to say, you set an enormously powerful precedent for all the people who are going to come after you, and I think Ryan has watched you, and he has really started to learn and grow as well. And I know that he'll mentor the next person after that, and I think we have really something pretty great going here, so we thank you.
Thank you so much.
So as always, you're free to stay, but I know you're busy. I'll stay a little bit in person, so this is my last one. Yay! Okay. I'll give you a gift.
Oh. Should I open my cards first?
No.
Oh, thank you. This is so cute.
Oh, I love it.
Ava, do you want to go in the middle?
Ready?
Here?
Yeah.
Here's fine.
Oh, no. Do you want to go in the middle, Laura? Go in the middle.
I'll follow you.
Okay.
Yeah, you're actually pretty sure I don't get to do the background.
Perfect.
Thank you.
We can all give props to Alita for her thoughtfulness and her gift picking. So thank you, Alita, for leading our charge as always. We appreciate you, too. All right, guys. So back on track here, we're going to be going towards the superintendent's report in.
Laura's going to take it.
Take two.
Yes. The first announcement is relative to our NEASK update and our New England Association of Schools and Colleges update. Top of the announcements, I'm going to ask Dr. Boynton to come to the table and just give an update about process, where we are, what's happened, and what's next.
I actually thought this was going to be after, so that works. Thank you, everyone, for the opportunity to be here this evening. We have a number of high school topics to share with you. So the first is NEASK, and my high school folks are familiar with NEASK. But for those of you here in the room and those at home, NEASK stands for the New England Association of Schools and Colleges. It's the accrediting body for public schools in New England as well as private and international schools. There's three commissions, one of which is the Commission on Public Schools. That's the commission we work with. And they walk us through a cycle for accreditation. And the accreditation process, it's pretty comprehensive. It is somewhat of a peer review, which is really cool, multi-dimensional. It's very supportive. Those of you who have been around for a while know that NEASK went through a reorganization and a change and adjusted their standards several times over in 2020 to start, and they've gone through a new iteration, and they have changed the process of accreditation to be much more reflective and supportive and growth mindset. So that was a very nice and welcome change from NEASK and that organization. So we've completed a number of steps. So our last accreditation was in 2017, and they went through some shifts over COVID, which reshuffles some people's timelines. So in the spring of 2024, we were identified as a spring-of-'27 school for the decennial visit, and the decennial visit determines continued accreditation. Also, last spring, our collaborative conference visit was scheduled for this year, April 30th and May 1st, so that has been completed. And then our steering committee was identified, and that steering committee was myself, Assistant Principal Janine Delay, and Department Head, World Language Department Head Maria Davis, were the steering committee. And then the self-reflection committee was identified, and that was our leadership team. And so it's a much more streamlined process. In the old process, every staff member had to be on a committee, and it was meetings and meetings and meetings. It's much more streamlined with still an opportunity for our staff to provide feedback and learn about the process. In August, at the very beginning of school, we had our kickoff meeting and school visit. Our liaison and director, Alison Geary, who I've worked with for many years, actually, I've known her for a while, she came and did a school visit and spoke with the faculty, and then the faculty and staff unpacked the new rubrics on that first day. And then, and that really kicked off our self-reflection process. And the self-reflection process can take anywhere from three to six months. Ours took about four-ish months from August to February. And in that process, you review the standards, you self-assess areas of strength and areas for growth, collect all kinds of evidence, from student work to teacher lessons to documentation, you name it. The evidence collection was pretty robust and thorough. And then, as part of the process as well, student, staff, and community surveys were administered. And then, beginning really in December, and we spent our, part of our leadership meetings were dedicated to NEASK and to folks here at the table that spent a lot of time and care in this. We started to draft our self-reflection reports, and the components of the self-reflection report are here, the school and community summary, there's a look-back section that takes a look five, three to five years, and what the school's been working on. The foundational elements in NEASK, which are those almost priority standards by which if you don't meet the foundational elements, you do run the risk of being put on warning and for accreditation. So those are like the heavy standards. And then the five learning standards, we identified priority areas for ourselves, and we also rated ourselves in the foundational elements and the priority areas. Staff throughout gave input and feedback and then ended up on it with a staff vote to approve the report and the ratings. That happened in February-March timeframe of 2025. We started preparations for the visit. The chair was identified, the visiting team was identified, and then final revisions to the self-reflection report, which was uploaded two weeks before the visit. And then we had our visit, which was lovely. It was two days, May 1st, April 30th and May 1st upcoming. So the Commission on Public Schools and the director will receive the collaborative conference report, and then sometime late summer, early fall, to be determined, they end up voting to approve the work of our self-reflection, but also the visiting team, which writes a report, the collaborative conference report. Once they vote, I get a copy of that, and that's summer/fall timeframe, and then it becomes public. So the report gets posted and shared with the Nishoba community. I'm happy to come back and do a presentation if you would like. That would be lovely to be able to do that. And then, from that point on, we create a school growth and improvement plan that's based on the collaborative conference. We share that with you all as well. And then, really, from the summer into the spring of 2027, our work as a high school is to continue work and improve on those identified priority areas and then deepening the alignment to the standards and foundational elements. And then we get to prepare for the decennial visit, starting in the fall. There is a school summary report that gets submitted in preparation for the decennial, and then spring, dates to be determined, we host our decennial visit. The hope is that the decennial visit visiting team includes some members that came in the collaborative conference here. It's really cool for them to be able to see growth, so hopefully there's consistency there. That visit is three days, and so it's more intensive, more on the ground, there's more stakeholders that they look at, and it's really centered around those priority areas, is what happens with the decennial visit. So after the decennial visit, we revise, we get the report sometime summer/fall of '27, and then we revise our school improvement plan, growth plan. And then, there are, there's a one-year, a three-year, and a six-year update that's prepared and uploaded to the NEASK portal, and then the process begins all over again. It's pretty thorough. Yeah. I personally value the, I value the process. Having been on a few visiting teams myself, it's really one of the best professional development opportunities you can engage in as an educator. It's really wonderful.
Amy, I'm going to pause here and let you ask questions. Yeah.
Yeah, this is just a timing question. So this collaborative conference, was that this year?
Yeah.
Okay. So was there, like, a year where nothing happened between April 2024 and this last year?
So we were identified in last year as a, as a spring 2027 school. And once you're identified as a spring 2027 school, that, or whatever, it could have been fall '27, right? So they put you in a spring or a fall bucket. Once you're identified in which cycle, then that kicks off a whole bunch of things. So we had to identify our steering committee, we had to identify who was our self-reflection committee. The steering committee did some training with NEASK, actually, to learn about the new process that has been updated even since 2020. And then, starting in the beginning of this school year, was our self-reflection process, if that makes sense.
Yeah. I'm just looking at the timeline, and it jumps from April 2024 to '25, and so I just...
Did I make a, was that a...
I think, no, I think it's just me making a interpretation.
Yeah. So our self-reflection process took about four, a little over four months. And then, and then there was a little bit more, as we were writing the report and refining the report, we were getting feedback as a leadership team and then with our teachers within departments.
So I think it's just a small typo.
Yeah. I think it says April 2024, and so now I'm putting it together. It should say April 2025, and then it makes perfect sense.
Okay, gotcha. Alita, can you scroll down on that a little bit to the timeline, the list of dates? Is that in the song?
No, it's on the, the link to click.
Does that matter?
Yeah.
But I mean, the final self-reflection report uploaded to NEASK portal should say April 2025, right?
Yes, it should.
That's all.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alita, okay.
Yeah. It was submitted, the requirement is two weeks before the visit takes place. It was submitted a little bit before then.
Any other questions about the NEASK update? I think I can hear kindergarteners outside, which is awesome. I don't think so. Their chatter is adorable, but they're having their visit, and I think we have a member in the gallery whose child might be out there. Yay! So I have a quick question for you guys. Maybe it's such a hard question. The first one is really cool. It seems like the visiting committee is actually going to be in the new school.
Well, we opened the new school in the fall of '27, so...
And so when do they arrive?
Spring of '27.
Yeah.
Okay, so they'll get to see the last vestige.
I'm hoping, actually, as part of their visit, we can take them on a tour.
Yeah.
Because I think it'll be in a stage of completion where we could do that, that would be a neat part of the visit.
And I think that for the community, too, that that was such a big part of the conversation, that the old building was really not going to be up to their standard, or we feared that it would not be, despite our best efforts. And so the fact that when they visit, they will see the brand-new building right behind us kind of upholding our end of the bargain, that'll be really cool. The last thing I wanted to ask you guys, and I think this is why this got off to the planning calendar to begin with, is we were perhaps wondering what role the school committee needs to play in the decennial visit, or if just members of the community are going to be called upon. You said they'll pull more stakeholders in. What does that look like to you?
Yeah. So I think because it's over three days, there are more opportunities. And really, their visit this year was one, was one full day, and then the second day was a work day with a decennial visit. And I was on a visiting team for a decennial last, for a school's decennials visit last year, and it's really two and a half days of you're on the ground, working with folks. So there is an opportunity to pull together in the decennial visit representatives from the school committee, and I know that that's a common thing that visiting teams request.
Okay. So more to come on that.
More to come on that, absolutely.
Because we have a couple years.
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
So this is accreditation just for the high school, right?
Yes.
And my understanding is NEASK is also now doing district accreditations? Is that something we've looked into?
I understand that, too. I think it's relatively new. We can explore that if we want to.
Yeah, I mean, they've expanded to elementary, to middle, to independent schools, CTE schools, and now international schools. So they're, they're quite a broad, broad organization.
Interesting. You know that our, the only other program in our district that's under those accreditation is kindergarten, isn't it? Any... No. I'll check. Any other questions on NEASK? All right, let's keep rolling on our superintendent's report. Thank you to Kate.
Thank you.
I know you'll be back. What else do we have, Laura?
Okay, so we have an update from Mr. Mel Karen next, FY 2016 update.
Thank you.
Mr. Mel Karen.
Absolutely. So last week, the Senate Ways and Means Committee released its version of the FY 26 state budget. So just as a reminder, it starts with the governor's proposal, goes to the House Ways and Means, and now the most recent releases from the Senate Ways and Means. We did see a slight decrease in our overall state aid projections. This is down from the House Ways and Means, but it's not down from the governor's proposal, which we use for budget planning purposes. We're still up from the governor's proposal. You know, as you know, for next steps, this goes through conference committee, and it's not finally released until the summer. So we'll continue to update the school committee on this. There are good news regarding the FY 25 supplemental budget. Still seeing some signals that we're going to get some additional funding based on FY 25 Circuit Breaker, for example, and that will come forward on the supplemental budget after the end of this year. However, we can continue to use Circuit Breaker in future years, so this is good news if we continue to go forward. Both the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents and the Massachusetts Association of Regional Schools continue to be our main source of sort of translation and update of all these updates that are coming from, and all these sort of legislative moves that are coming from the state level. They are all also signaling that the level of legislative sort of advocacy this spring, as well as a partnership with our legislatures, is really pushing this trend of some increased funding, not just supplementally, but also for FY 26. And there's still a need to look at funding structures, such as Chapter 70 long-term, and those things are on the table moving forward, and we'll continue to update the school committee on that information as well.
Any questions on that item? All right, thanks, Russ.
Madam Chair, I have a suggestion for consideration. The next section of the announcements is, there's quite a bit. Superintendent Downing has joined us, which is great. I'm just wondering, we have teachers who have joined us this evening, and we have a couple curriculum updates. With your permission, I'd like to recommend that maybe we shift Superintendent Downing's updates to allow our teachers to present, so...
Yeah, so bringing the new business item, which is the curriculum update.
The curriculum updates, the innovative innovation pathways, our six-to-eight math curriculum selection update, which will be quick, and then we have an update around nine to 12 math and science.
All right. Are there any objections with rearranging a little bit so that our friends in the gallery don't need to stay all night like us? Yes, we did it. No objections. Okay, so why don't you take the lead on driving us through the agenda here?
So I am going to ask Ms. Hannigan to come on out and provide us with an exciting update about our third innovation pathway designation. So Ms. Hannigan is Donnie, the appropriate guard there, marketing, and thank you.
Thank you. I'm really excited for the opportunity, especially because I'm here tonight to officially and finally announce our designation of an information technology pathway.
Yay!
I think I promised this in April, but we got it in mid-May. So this information designation marks our third pathway, and will expand our career-connected learning into high-demand fields like digital creation, computer data science, and future media production. The application window for students who are interested in applying for this pathway next fall, so they would start in the fall 2025 school year, it will open this Friday, May 16th, and it will close Friday, June 6th. And our goal is hopefully to get answers to students who have applied before the end of the school year. We'll be communicating this now that it's been announced here through the Common this Friday, as well as through emails to our incoming freshmen. Additionally, we'll put this on our information pathways, our innovation pathways website, where we'll be uploading all of the courses that have been approved to be a part of this pathway, so that interested students can really get a good understanding of what these offerings are and how they might fit into their own high school experience. While I'm here, and it's so exciting to be the one presenting this news, I do just want to take the time to acknowledge that it reflects a huge team effort. It was participation and support from our district-level administrators, from our high school administrators, our guidance team, our high school teachers, our pathways team, and a lot of cross-department collaboration to put together an application that was successful. And I think we really focused on building something out of the existing strong coursework that exists at the high school level while keeping in mind the lens that we're moving into a new building with brand-new technology in the next two years. So keeping, just acknowledging that we're going to have to continue to work so that we're advancing our programming as we advance into the open. And I was here last week giving an update and an overview, so this information pathway will work similarly to our first two pathways that we launched this year. So I won't reiterate all of that, but I'm happy to field any questions you might have specifically about this pathway.
I'm going to kick it off by saying thank you so much. This is amazing to the entire team, frankly. I've talked to two separate parents who have told me that their child is excited about the pathway programming, combined with the brand-new building, and it's able, and they're staying at Nishoba High School because of those two things specifically. In addition to all the other amazing things that have always been there, these two things, those two parents in particular, and I'm sure there are others.
I think the pathway program really highlights the great work that's happening, and it's putting it in front of families again.
And it just organizes. I think it's an organizing principle, too, that says, these things were always here. That's right. We're putting some, it's just more purposeful, we organize it. It's a pathway. So, pretty awesome. There will also be, if I may, Ms. Hannigan, grant opportunity that's associated with the designation.
Yep. And we should be getting more information about that over the coming weeks, so we'll start that process as soon as we can.
Any questions on the new pathway, our third pathway? That's awesome. All right, thanks. Thank you. Appreciate it. Where shall we go next?
Superintendent Downing's not going to want me in his seat anymore. The next is a brief update. I'm going to ask Ms. Burdick to come to the table. We had provided an update in April about where we were with our six-to-eight mathematics curriculum review process, and we've made a selection and...
curriculum review process, and we've made a selection, and we're super excited to share that with the committee. And it dovetails well with our nine through 12 math and science update, if you're working on a line there. So Ms. McGrady, can you provide an update about our six to eight math curriculum?
Yes, happy to do so. Thank you for having me.
Six to eight and nine, a little bit of.
Yes, a little bit of nonsense. So in accordance with strategic objective number two, initiative one, the six through eight math curriculum review has finished phase two. And after evaluating the data from each program, I'm excited to report that the committee concluded that Imagine Learning, illustrative mathematics, most effectively aligns with our district priorities and student needs. There was actually 100% consensus at our meeting, which was fantastic. It makes, you know, the implementation process a little easier as we look to next year. So we've shifted into the implement phase and planning for that. We have a professional development plan made, and it actually starts this Friday, where the six through eight and nine math teachers and special educators will come together for a launch from Imagine Learning, and they'll get like a real overview of the structure and just a little bit more details on the platform and things like that, followed by a more in-house approach to unit unpacking in June. So really excited, the teachers are excited. So I look forward to updating you all next year on the implementation and how that's going as well.
Fantastic. Any questions on the six through eight plus nine curriculum update? I just want to give a very quick clarification here. If you look at the materials and you see that hyperlink here, it's, I think, the broken, it's a broken link. But Alida's also included your presentation in the materials, so you guys should just access it directly there. Thanks. Appreciate all that work.
Actually, Ms. McGrady, you might.
I thought maybe I was staying, but then.
Now we're doing real nine through twelve. He's making sure everyone's staying with that. So thank you to Department Head Lynn P. here, the Department Head for Science at the high school, and Mr. Nate Malborne, who is our Department Head for Mathematics at the high school. And thank you for Curriculum Director, Ms. McGrady, who worked with both math and science. And they're going to provide an update tonight about our ongoing processes that relates to the curriculum review process for nine through 12 mathematics and science respectively, which has been a complex process, because there are a lot of pieces to it. But I would just like to give a shout out to all three of our educators here who have been working in tandem and collaboration, and working really hard to collaborate with teaching and learning, to work to strengthen alignment with our middle school, and then also working with their departments to really elevate the great work that's already happening, but to continue to deepen the work as we move forward. So thank you to all three of you for all of the work that you've done. It's noted and appreciated. I know I try and tell you all the time, and I'm saying it publicly tonight. Thank you very much. So we have a short presentation. The work is not finished. It is ongoing, but we're pleased to share an update as of May 2025 about where we're at and where we're headed. So I'm going to turn it over to Alida to switch slides. I think I have the next slide. This is just a reminder to our community and to the committee of our curriculum review process, which really guides all of our curriculum review processes in the district, K to 12. It's a five-phase process. We've brought this forward to the committee before. It has been the driver for all of our curriculum review processes, and it is work to drive our math and our science processes for the high school as well. So this just serves as a reminder. Next slide. All right.
Nine through 12 math, next. So starting here is our prior work, so completed before this year. We revised and documented three units in each of the levels of math, from Algebra I through Precalculus, and we completed our book study on Building Thinking Classrooms by Peter Lilidell, which culminated in Heidi Beagle and myself attending a virtual professional development that was live with him, which, if you are familiar with Peter Lilidell, he's world-renowned. So we had people literally from all over the world on this. He was in Denmark while he was giving the presentation, so it was interesting. It was the middle of the night for him. For this year, we started off by reading through the elementary, middle school vision statements to create a cohesive vision statement that aligned with theirs and extended through to the high school, collected and analyzed feedback. We were collaborative with Ms. McGrady and the eighth-grade teachers in evaluating the Algebra I curriculum. We are implementing along with them, as you heard, the Algebra I Imagine Learning curriculum next year. And then the other big move, which we've talked about already so far this year, adjusting the course sequencing to ensure that all students take geometry before going to Algebra II. From here, our next step will be to look at the Imagine Learning materials for Algebra II and geometry. They exist, and we're looking to vertically align the curriculum as well. And our next book study will be on productive struggle in math. Connected with this, over the summer, I'll be taking a course in asking effective questions. And it's really on this bigger idea, as we've talked about through Kaleidoscope and through NEAS, about students doing the thinking in math, so.
All right. So first, I just want to say thank you to Mr. Malborne. As his first-year Department Head, it's been fantastic to work with you and to see the collaboration between the stems. So that's been awesome to work with both of you. I want to take a moment just to remind the committee of the work that took place last year, when the science department entered phase one of the curriculum review. So in phase one, the department engaged in a deep-dive analysis to see how current instructional practices, the curricula, and materials support student learning, and then to also envision that nine through 12 ideal science experience. So the members of the department thoughtfully developed that nine through 12 instructional vision, and together we analyzed data and sought feedback from our students and families. From the feedback, next steps were developed, including providing more clarity in the course booklet, as well as when meeting with students regarding the course descriptions, and seeking out innovative and engaging ways to enhance instruction. Members of the department participated in Kaleidoscope's deeper learning work, which included observing other classrooms and revising lessons. It was determined from the feedback and the deeper learning work that taking a close look at the cross-cutting concepts and science and engineering practices in conjunction with the disciplinary core ideas was essential and kind of led the work for this year, which I'll turn it over to Department Head, Mrs. Peer, to talk about our work this year.
Thank you. I just want to give a quick shout-out first. As you don't know, I've been here forever. Been here 25 years, and I've been my 12 years Department Head. And I want to give a shout-out to Kate in teaching and learning. This is the most time that I, that my department's ever been given to work on curriculum. And when I, I don't know if you remember, I was here last year probably about the same time, and we were kind of just getting our feet wet, what were we going to do? Now that we're here, and I'm going to talk about the accomplishments of this year, like we are running with it, and I couldn't feel happier about this. So I just wanted to give a shout-out that that time was so important and so valuable. That being said, let me talk about accomplishments this year. So we decided to sort of divide the professional development into biochem and physics, physical science, so that these groups could work closely together. So biology, I'll say done loosely, but we pre, we have, we know what we're doing with that, and now it's just jumping in and doing our units to align with NGSS. Chemistry is currently working on that. Literally finished our first unit yesterday, which I was surprised that we're kind of ahead of ourselves. So I feel like now chemistry's in that same position, and now we're ready to go. And then physics and physical science is our next step. We're going to have our first all-day PD in January of next school year, and then we'll have three full days to get that ball rolling. So with that, you can see the teachers, every single teacher, which was wonderful, attended the NGSS conference in December. And then we had a few teachers, I was one of them, who did some additional workshops. We obviously took our training, and that's now why we're revising the curriculum guides and maps. So you can see a lot of kind of little changes come here and there. And I mean, this work, and anybody who's a teacher here knows, the curriculum work should never be done, you should always be revising. But I think this will be sort of a big revision, and then as we go through the years, there'll be sort of more little things to fix after we reflect. So that's the plan with that. As I mentioned, biology unit one is complete, and chemistry unit one is complete as well. And then one of the big, this is probably the biggest change that we did this year. We began crafting and posting lesson objectives for all core courses and some elective courses. This was something that the high school was, wanted to do, and it kind of went in with Kaleidoscope, I think you would agree, Kate, this idea of having these learning objectives and having them posted. So we took a step back a little bit. We wanted to get these established because it works well, then when you get those objectives, you now can, you know, revise your curriculum. So we kind of stopped with the curriculum work, we got these going, and now we're back in it. Most classes have most objectives for most units. You'll see our next step is to complete that next year. We will have that done. And then, as Candace mentioned, she was talking about the SEPs, which are the science and engineering practices, and the CCCs, which are cross-cutting concepts, which is in the, basically, NGS is kind of one of their teaching kind of spiel's. We are going to, I have asked Dan Verri, who teaches graphics, if he has any students who might be interested in doing this as a project. So we'll have posters that have the SEPs, the cross-cutting concepts, in every science classroom, and as your objectives are posted for content, we then say, okay, this is, here are the cross-cutting concepts. You put a little star, a little paperclip, or whatever on the cross-cutting concepts that you're covering that day or that week, and then the kids are, hopefully, they can make those connections. So I thought maybe having a student do that for a project is nice for that student as well, maybe something they can put in your portfolio, which, you know, again, supports a pong and things like that. And then we're, of course, continuing the participation in Kaleidoscope's deeper learning. So that was our accomplishments this year, and we've been updated that. And then our next step, biology, chemistry, we're hoping to have those big revisions done by next year. Physics, physical science is going to be a little bit of a, it's a little bit different kind of animal, so that we're going to have to dive a little deeper into. But we're starting that, which is what you'll see in bullet two. So this is to analyze and revise physics, excuse me, and physical science course units. We're hoping to finish crafting and post all these less objectives for all four classes. And Candace and I have talked about compiling resources for phenomenon-based teaching, because if you've ever gone to these conferences, they give you so much stuff, but it's so much that you don't know what to do with it. So Candace and I have talked about sort of sitting down, getting these resources in sort of one area that's easy for teachers to get to and use. So that's a plan for us for next year. Post the SEPs and CCC posters and use them, and of course, the continued participation in Kaleidoscope. So that's what we have.
That's awesome. Thank you guys so much for that. We just have a couple examples.
Oh, sorry. I actually forgot we had this too. So after the training that the department had on unpacking the NGSS standards and using them to influence teaching, teachers revised units to include these standards. The disciplinary core ideas were already there, but teachers are taking the time to identify which science and engineering practice and which cross-cutting concept they're really going to highlight. And then, as Linda said, that will be shown to the kids as well, as, you know, a way for them to make sure they're understanding all the different objectives. So it's really telling the story, those two, of the how of the teaching. And these standards influence the revisions that are being made to the learning experiences. And at this time, this has been completed for biology and is expanding to chemistry and physics, as Ms. Peer had said. So included in this work is the identification of those anchoring phenomena, so we're trying to put those into each unit to ground each unit in just that common phenomenon, that common, like engaging experience for the kids to really hook them into it. And Ms. Peer is going to speak to one example?
Yeah, this is an example, the whole thing's not there, but one of the things that NGSS sort of, what's the word I'm looking for, really emphasizes, they call it ABC, Activity Before Content. So this idea of, don't even tell the kids what's going on. I mean, of course, it's a guide, throw it at them, but you give them this, you know, one of the ones we do is something called Martian in the Car. And you talk about this Martian who was sent to Earth, and he has to bring something back that's alive, and he brings back a car. And the Martian government says, no, that's not alive. And then the kids now have to, you have a set of prosecutors and then defense, and they have to either prosecute him or defend him. Did he bring something back that was alive? And what it forces them to do is go through all the characteristics of life. What we used to do is you would introduce the characteristics of life first, but now we've changed it, you let them just go with it. And they will come up with some on their own, and some they won't. And we also noticed when we started doing this, the misconceptions come up. So a very common misconception is that a characteristic of life is movement. That is actually not one of the characteristics of life, but it's very common. So now we're seeing these kids come up with misconceptions, and it's a great way, instead of assuming that was a misconception, when we see it, now we know, we have to change that kind of thinking. So this is just one example, and we're trying to do this with all the units in all the course classes. So that's the plan for that. And then the next slide is just some examples, this was, I apologize, the pictures aren't great, but just some quick examples of how we're posting objectives. So in different rooms, there's some AP Bio, and regular Bio, Bio Ethics is up there, there's an Honors Bio, and then there's some chemistry ones. So they're not exactly the same, but students can walk into a class, science classroom, and they know, oh, look at the bright, pretty pictures, you know, papers on the wall, that's where the objectives are. So we tried to kind of do this universally. And it's also nice when we have Desi come in and visit. You notice they went right to the wall, the kind of first thing they did, they lifted the objectives, and it was really nice. And I think they did the same thing with NEAS. I didn't have anybody come in for NEAS, but my assumption is they did that. So, and this is, again, as you said, the work's already there. It's just, it's a great way of like organizing, I like that term, because of course we were doing these, but now they're out. The kids can see them, the community can see them, the teachers can see them, right? So that's how we've been doing it. There you go. I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. It was a lot of information. It's hard to capture it all, but you could clearly see the excitement of the work, so thank you. Thank you for really helping to lead the work, and thank you to all three of you. Any questions, guys?
Yeah, I was curious, I was looking at that, the language and stuff, and the cross-cutting, and then the science and engineering practice. So for both the math and this, are they trying to make it more clear how these big concepts go across a variety of subjects? So I guess my question is, are you now going to have different classes working together to do projects together to kind of reinforce that idea, since that seems to be one of the big outing practices here?
Ideally, that would be great. I know, Nate and I touched base a little bit to start, especially incoming freshmen, to have a more math-science experience, rather than just a math experience and science experience. I know math is doing a lot of changes, and even, we still have to really look at the freshman experience, the science experience too. So that is definitely something we're thinking about doing. It's been talked about. I'm not, I'm not sure we're quite there yet, because I think we have to get established before we sort of come together. I don't know if you want to add to that, but.
Well, I would agree with that. And we're thankfully in math, we're the step behind science, so they're almost like our older sibling, so they're going through a lot of the growing pains, and we then get to kind of ride on the tail of them. So yes, that is the ultimate goal, and we talk about it all the time. I refer to us as that transformer, we're like the STEM Megatron, where we come together. Because like Linda said, we've been kind of compartmentalized, but trying to integrate that back together, and I think it kind of brings back, as Bridget was talking about earlier, this idea of our future pathways and bringing everybody together.
I'd also say if you want a softer, gentler Megatron, you might include the humanities as well. Don't forget us. Any other questions?
Any other questions?
I could, yeah, just like, so for freshmen who have taken Algebra II, they're going to be taking geometry as sophomores, but incoming freshmen are going to be taking geometry?
Yes.
Freshmen?
Yep.
So that's just going to be the only year that that's
Correct.
happening and...
Yeah, so currently at the high school, we have incoming freshmen taking Algebra II along with juniors also taking Algebra II. So those classes are integrated between freshmen and juniors. And we have some students in the class who are coming from geometry, some that are coming directly from Algebra I. So completely different skill sets. Whereas now, all students in geometry, yes, there will be some freshmen and some sophomores, but they're all coming directly from Algebra I. And then all of our students in Algebra II will be coming directly from geometry and all of our students in pre-calc. So even though their grade levels might be different, their prerequisites are exactly the same now where they haven't been at the best.
That makes so much more sense.
Yes.
I didn't understand why you're switching it.
Okay. I actually did have one question, just don't want to hear you ask that. When you guys are looking at the freshman science experience, we talked a little bit about you guys reviewing, and maybe even for you Laura, Kirk, whether or not physics, like the physics with engineering course is really appropriate in the freshman model? And are you guys going to consider maybe moving Bio, Chem, et cetera?
So that's a great complicated question. I know that the department has talked about it. I know that there's great value in having that course as freshmen. It really sets the students up for their foundational experiences as they move forward through the high school. So there's a benefit to that. And I think we've done some research too with senior peer districts who also use that model. Nonetheless, as Ms. Pierren said, the physics with engineering in the, in the physical science course is on the docket to review as we move forward as an exit.
Meaning it might move grades, but that's not off the table?
It's not off the table, but looking at the relationship between how much math is in the course, all of that will be reviewed. But you know, we're wanting to make the best decision for our students and create a really strong foundation for our students as they move forward. So all of that will be part of the conversation. And we're looking forward to the next step. So we're digging in next.
Yeah, I think that if you, if you don't have kids who have been freshmen yet, with the parents I've spoken to, especially for kids who are not super talented in math, like idiotly, they're coming into freshman year very scared to take that physics with engineering class. They want to take a high level science, but they just don't feel like their math ability is, has ramped up yet. And so I think that that's something, I just wanted to, you guys probably know this. I feel responsible for saying it, that a kid who's not taking Algebra in eighth grade, which my understanding is that number is a little, is on the bigger side right now. Inhale anyway. That those kids feel nervous about taking the physics with engineering as freshmen and are not taking it. So, and we'll, you know, I understand that the, the physical science class is very similar. There's just a lot of questions they have around that ninth grade.
Thank you for sharing.
But otherwise, fantastic. Thank you so much, Chris. We're so appreciative of all the work. Thank you. Hi, guys. So wonderful. So we have, we're going to now jump back to the superintendent's report, that one bullet item that says, we're going to be looking at the NRHS engagement, the engagement survey, let's talk about later. We're going to do the leadership structure and staffing adjustments. And Kirk is here with us via Zoom with all of our technological expertise to my right. Kirk, can you hear us?
I can, Chair. How do I sound to you?
You sound like, like a... Be all mighty!
Clarification, the sound does kind of spot in and out a little bit. But thank you for making this accommodation tonight. And it is clear that Assistant Superintendent Friend has extreme coming into the meeting and is doing a fantastic job on the school side. So thank you, Assistant Superintendent.
Yes.
I'm coming to you from Washington DC this evening, where tomorrow I'll be attending the 3rd District Day. Represent 3rd District Representative to Congress, Lori Treyhan, is inviting district leaders from her district to join in hearing some policy developments that are happening here in DC. And I'm hoping to hear some emphasis and learn some more about what we can expect on a federal level regarding education, policy and finance. That being said, I want to talk to you tonight about some leadership structures and staffing adjustments that we are poised to make. We just exited out of the very challenging budget season. And I'm happy to report, as you all know, all three of our towns have passed the school district budget recently. And congratulations to the Bolton community who passed their ballot initiative at the ballot box this past week. We recognize our budget is a voted budget. And so the adjustments I'm proposing tonight are all within the voted budget. There's no additional cost. And then in the table, you'll see at the end, we actually have just a sort of a sliver of leeway within the budget as well. So that being said, tonight I'm proposing that the, for the committee to take action to create the new position, which is the Assistant Superintendent of Finance, Operations and Safety. This will replace the current Director of Finance and Operations job description. As you may recall, Mr. Mulcayen serves as a norm safety coordinator following the resignation of Lisa Galbaki and effectively managed those responsibilities during the transition to Ms. Whipper. I now propose that we formally integrate those safety responsibilities into his role on a permanent basis. And given the expanded scope of that role, it really falls into the responsibilities of what we would expect from an Assistant Superintendent. It would be very much appropriate to reclassify this role, both in title and compensation. It's important to note that this change will not impact the operational budget. As I've learned, we are able to put a portion of offset to the position through the food services account. And we'll be utilizing funds from purchased items like seconds and extras as opposed to using revenue received from the free lunch program. So the important part about making this move is that it will then allow our current Director of Health Wellness and Safety to focus on nursing, health and wellness and function as the float nurse for the district. Currently in the budget, we have an unfilled .5 float nurse position that I froze during spring hiring as we were walking through some uncertain times, but it's terrible. So in taking that role, we can reduce that .5 position. In addition, you saw the middle school leaders presented the new related arts rotation. We had estimated that that reduction would be equal to 3.0 FTE. It actualized into 3.8 FTE, meaning there's an additional .8, which is estimated to be around a salary reduction of $75,000. The other piece of good news that Mr. Mulcayen rocked to this group last week, last meeting I should say, is that through some negotiations with our insurance company and participating in activities to promote wellness with the insurance company, they agreed to reduce our rates by over three percentage points. That will actualize to an estimate of a $240,000 reduction in estimated insurance costs. So the salary reduction of the float nurse, the reduction of the .8 related arts, in combination with the insurance premium reduction, provides us enough, revenue, within revenues in the long term, provides us enough in the budget to reinstate the four dean positions at our three middle schools and the high school. The estimated cost to reinstate those positions is roughly around $350,000. I say roughly because we are anticipating retirement. So there will be a new hire in one of those positions. And so I bring that to you as good news. If you recall, in the budget process, the deans were within the scope of the positions we were keeping. And it was the dramatic increase in insurance costs that made us go to that degree. So as we work our way on the prioritization list of what we can return back to our essential programming, the deans were hired on that priority list. The next piece is the reinstatement of the .4 FTE World Language Teacher at Mishoma Regional High School. If you recall, we were talking about declining enrollment to enable sustained programs. And looking at enrollment in our German program, we began talking about a sunset to that program. Well, we have, are happy to report that our estimated enrollment, as you learn from the school choice screening, is somewhere in the range of 15 to 20 students higher than we anticipated because fewer students are electing to go to CTE after, career technical education after eighth grade. So with that, we need more sections of world language so that every student who chooses to take a world language can certainly take that language. And so the way that we are going to pay for the cost of that position is with the reduction of the freshman study position. Talking with the high school leadership, they believe that is the prioritization that we need to make at this time to ensure that students are getting their language choices, which is a true graduate graduation requirement. So when you look at the summary of these moves, I provided a table in the report, you will actually see that it comes at a cost reduction in the budget of $22,000, approximately $22,848. So that shows you that these moves still stay within our salary lines. And being in the operational purview, the two responsibilities that the school committee would have to set this in motion is all assistant superintendents have to be approved by the school committee. And we need to also approve that job description since it is a new, technically a new job description with additional responsibilities entitled. So with that tonight, Madam Chair, I am, request that the committee take favorable action on two items this evening. One is approve the job description for the Assistant Superintendent of Finance, Operations and Safety, which will replace the Director of Finance and Operations. And also authorize me, the superintendent, to enter into negotiations with Mr. Ross Mulcayen for this position. I don't think I have to speak accolades of Ross greater than I already have this year. Ross has proved to be an outstanding leader who's done an exemplary job in his role as Finance and Operations Director. And he welcomes the opportunity to bring safety into that responsibility. As we know, he's very capable and can handle those terms, dimensions. So I strongly recommend that Mr. Mulcayen be appointed that position. And I need the committee to authorize me to begin entering in the negotiations with Mr. Mulcayen to do that. So with that, Madam Chair, I turn it back to you.
All right, thanks Kirk for that update. I know that that was a lot for people to take in. There is ultimately a couple of reallocations that Kirk is talking about. This is a budget neutral change and ultimately is taking a position that already exists and simply renaming it. But by school committee policy, the school committee is responsible for all new position creation. So Kirk, you...
And Madam Chair?
Yeah.
I, I think it's important to note that for this model of reinstating dean positions, there's a trickle down to the approval of the job description because that will then free up the job responsibilities of our nurse leader and Director of Nursing to function as the float nurse, thus enabling us to reduce that position, which provides the available capital to, dollars to pay for those positions. A portion of them.
So very clever use of your resources Kirk. Does anybody have any questions about this? Okay. So Kirk, let me just do a little sidebar here. You know, it does go kind of, I didn't realize we're going to actually be voting on this tonight. Is it essential that we authorize you tonight or can this wait? Until, because normally when we present the community with something...
Well, I was hoping to do that so we can get moving with our planning. We're late in the school year to do that. And so I think it, you know, as, as I provided these materials to the school committee earlier, I'm hoping we can take that action. But Madam Chair, this is your meeting and it's, it's up to you.
So the only thing I'm concerned about is that even if the school committee, who is quite adept at finding school committee materials, was aware, the community might not be. And it is our protocol to allow the community to digest things that although this is fairly straightforward, if we might as a committee want to take the vote on the 28th, 8th, which would then force a little bit of a pause in your process, which I know you're gung ho. So I'm going to ask the committee what they want to do, if you guys want to hold.
Madam Chair, if I may, one more thing?
Please.
The other thing I would like you to consider in this request I'm bringing forward to you tonight, is we have employees that are waiting on the fate of their positions. And it is mid-May, it is in the height of, of job seeking season. And I know some of our employees are doing that. And they will continue their searches until they have that absolute security that their positions will be there.
So I'd like to hear from the committee on how you feel about taking this step without allowing for the two week delay, which is typically our protocol, to allow the community to weigh in, to give us their feedback? Or do you feel like confident enough to go forward with the vote this evening?
I feel like, I don't think anything's changed. It was the same information presented at the last meeting.
Well, that was, that's okay. So the community is just really hearing it for the first time. So that's why I do want to recognize that. But if it is the will of the committee to authorize the superintendent this evening, considering what Kirk just shared, we do have some pressures late in the budget season here. Jackie?
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Go for it.
So I really like to adhere to what's our typical practice. That being said, knowing that we have these time constraints, can it be somewhat of a both and? Like, because it's a net neutral shift, I don't have as many concerns. However, I do want our community to have time to digest this and then ask for feedback. But I don't know if there's a way where we can balance both of those based on the current time. And that's what I'm also concerned about, but I also recognize that it's a net neutral decision.
Shannon?
Oh, I also would prefer to give the two weeks, but I think just given the timeframe, I'm comfortable making an exception in this instance personally.
Anyone else want to weigh in?
I'd be willing to make an exception.
Make an exception?
And I think that, speaking as a member of the community and having children in school, the dean position is an important position. The deans we have are well respected, you know.
I have a clarifying question. Just, is the, is what we're being asked to vote on tonight just related to approving the job description for the Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Operations Safety?
And then to also authorize Superintendent Downing to enter into negotiations with Ross Mulcayen to potentially, you know, take this position? It's not a done deal.
Yeah, but then the deans, I guess, I'm just trying to parse out how, how much those positions are tied to this decision. And I know that Superintendent Downing just said that they're all kind of wrapped up together, but...
Yeah.
Is it possible to separate the two tonight?
Yeah, I can answer that question. So within the scope of personnel and the budget, as you know, I have the operational authority to make those adjustments, as long as I stay within, you know, the approved budget and the approved sectors within those budgets. It's the $51,000 reduction in the float nurse that is important to this model. And I... And I can't make that reduction of the float nurse until I have the job description approved to ensure that that's where those responsibilities are applied. Because ultimately, if the committee did not approve the job description, I need to keep Ms. Wicker as Head of Safety as well, which means I would then need to hire the float nurse to play the float nurse responsibilities. But all the other elements within the budget are within the purview of the superintendent as it is within side or budget constraints as well.
So it's really about the, this new Assistant Superintendent position is going to be assuming about 15, let's say that, you know, 15% or 10% of this position's time is going to be now delegated towards safety. And therefore, you're going to remove it from Ms. Wicker's position and make her part float nurse and not hire the float nurse. So that gives you the additional money to then hire the deans. It's like a job.
Correct. Her position will be Director of, it'll be the previous job description before we made it Health, Wellness and Safety. It's Director of Nursing Health and Wellness. And in that job description, functions as supporting, you know, students through, excuse me, the schools through providing nursing services as well.
And so I'll just say one final thing, and this is not so much for you guys. And Ross, I hope you'll forgive me for, I hope you don't feel embarrassed by this. But I just want to make it clear to the community that creating a second Assistant Superintendent, this is a title change. It's not necessarily adding an administrator. And so that's very important to make clear. However, what we want to do is keep the best and brightest leaders in our district. And by creating this position, because Ross is so capable, he is going to be able to take on this additional responsibility with ease, we think. He's done it before. After Lisa Gilbicki left the district, Ross assumed this. It's something that he has done in the past without the additional title, without the additional compensation. He is willing, I think, after negotiations, if it comes out all right, to take this on. I would appreciate giving the superintendent that opportunity to go ahead and push forward with all these important changes because our district needs these strong leaders to remain and stay and grow and get better and feel like they're being developed professionally. So I'm just going to poll the committee once and for all. Can you give me a thumbs up if you're okay taking this vote tonight to authorize the superintendent? All right, everybody. So I'm going to turn to Amy for a motion. We're going to do one at a time. First is going to create the job description and then the second will be the authorization.
I move to approve the Assistant Superintendent of Finance Operations and Safety job description as presented.
As included in the meeting materials? Kirk?
Yes, it should be included in the materials.
I'm just going to double check that before I take my second.
I see it.
Thank you. Very good. Thank you, Alida. Do I have a second on that? Miss Lindsay. Good job. So because Kirk is with us, well, first let me ask for discussion, any discussion further? We are going to take a roll call vote, just so that we're clear. So I'll start with John.
Yes.
Lindsay.
Yes.
Robin.
Yes.
Amy V.
Yes.
Amy C.
Yes.
Myself.
Yes.
Shondor.
Yes.
And Jackie.
Yes.
Okay, that is unanimous. So the new job description has been created. Now let's move to the second motion.
I move to authorize the superintendent to enter into negotiations with Ross Mokaren for Assistant Superintendent of Finance Operations and Safety.
I'll second that. Is there any further discussion? All right, let's go one more time around. John?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Robin?
Yes.
Amy V?
Yes.
Amy C?
Yes.
Myself?
Yes.
Shondor?
Yes.
And Jackie?
Yes.
Okay, Kirk, you have been authorized.
That's great. I want to thank the committee, most specifically for honoring the work of Mr. Mokaren. As I said, he's been nothing but outstanding. So congratulations, Ross. It looks like we'll have a conversation upon my return from Washington DC. And if there's anything, Madam Chair, for Mr. Mokaren to address, I would happily give the rest of my time to him.
Well, considering nothing has been yet accomplished, I would turn it over to Ross only if he wants.
Yeah. No, thank you. More than, more than fair. So the end of the school year will mark my 10th year in the district. And I am, you know, more than, you know, grateful and thankful. I want to make sure I say that publicly, not just to the school committee, but to obviously the students whom I serve and the staff that I work with, the leadership team, and obviously the school committee for the consideration for the expansion of responsibility and role. But also, it's less about the title, but it's more about, you know, my ability to continue to expand my leadership, to be part of a learning organization and learn myself and to, you know, like we say, you know, be your very best, to be my very best for the students and the work and the mission of this district. So thank you.
All right. We look forward to hearing from you next week on the planning calendar. We do have something where you would, because an Assistant Superintendent position in Master and Roll Law, the school committee is required to approve. Although the school committee in Massachusetts only has one employee, and that is the superintendent, there are a handful of top-tier employees who the school committee must approve before they can take on their job. And so we will be asked to approve if negotiations proceed favorably at the next meeting. All right.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yes, thank you for that comprehensive explanation, Kirk. Clearly, you have a lot of balls in the air at all times. All right, everybody. So we're going to move on to new business. And this is- Yeah, would you mind if I took the engagement survey out of the superintendent's report and just had, because it's on the agenda twice. So can we just keep it in the high school updates? Kirk, is that okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. So we're going to jump down to new business. And I think once again, we are going to welcome our high school principal, Dr. Boynton, to the desk. And also Mr. Walker.
Can we do handbook first?
Yes, absolutely. So-
Madam Chair, sorry.
No problem. No problem. So if there's no objection, we're going to skip over the engagement survey because our principal would like to do handbook revisions first. You guys have in your materials, not only the redline version of the handbook, but also a brief explanation, a summary of the 15 changes that were made. And so I imagine that Dr. Boynton is going to give us a brief presentation here and then you guys can ask questions if you have to.
I really appreciate it, Madam Chair. Thank you very much. I have a guest with us, Mr. Walker, Assistant Principal for grades 10 and 12. And so he and I will be collaborating to answer any questions that the committee may have about any items in the handbook, changes, or just questions you may have. So you may recall, when I started four years ago, the handbook had not undergone a thorough review for a very long time. And so working with my school council, that includes parents, students, and teachers, we, and Ava is right there. I'll tell one quick anecdote that Ava was making comments while on the plane from Costa Rica on the handbooks. So and her edits and adjustments will be memorialized really forever. So she's been tremendous in that. So this year, we engaged in conversations and work as school council around the handbook, really focusing in on two sections, one of which was really driven by our students, and that's the Student Life section. So our student members, you even surveyed Ava to get feedback from our student body, and we made some adjustments. The staff side wanted really to take a look at academic integrity. And because of the timing of this meeting, as well as other movements within the district, looking at AI technology, we did put a pause on that because that's a much larger conversation. So that's something that our school council will come back to next year. And maybe even, you know, that might be a more than a year conversation, depending on where that goes, from a district policy side of things. The other sort of major areas that we changed really reflected policy changes that you all made. So we made that change in the moment to the dress code. That is in there and implemented. We made a change to the Student Searches section, so that's reflected in there. And I greatly appreciate the policy subcommittee work on shoring up policies and all of your input. And then the Student Physical section, that also, so all of, like, any new policies that have been adopted by a school committee are in the handbook at this juncture. And you do have the redline version, so that'll get cleaned up. Other changes really tried to reflect either current practice. So that if the Academic Integrity section, there was a section that said, without teacher consent, that our teachers felt that that was kind of odd language and they don't give consent for, you know, for non-integrity. So that section, that phrase was removed. In the Student Life section, based on student feedback and then staff feedback, we updated the language around the library and media. We updated the language that was really quite outdated for uniforms for PE and added new language for clothing for wellness that is reflective and in line with our dress code policy. It's a little more general. In the Attendance section, we added in language regarding attendance contracts and revised the response chart for skipping classes that reflects current practice. Other more sort of basic changes, updating the calendar, the academic calendar, staffing changes, adding in links to the program of studies. One section in Student Life around foreign exchange students, they don't receive a diploma and that language was in there, so that needed to be changed. They can attend graduation and receive a certificate. And then we also, in the Student Life section, changed our parking policy. Because we don't need daily passes any longer, we have enough, we have enough passes. We also revised language in the cafeteria and school lunch to revise hours and our new food service company and the fact that the first lunch and breakfast is free for all students at this time. And so that, that's, you have the change memo. I think there might be some questions from the committee and from the community. And so Mr. Walker and I are happy to answer any questions. And the handbook is an ongoing process to revise, so it's never done.
And you guys might know this, but I'll just say it out loud, that the, and you guys correct me if I'm wrong, but the high school handbook is something that you need to vote on for the school-
Yes, so you'll be voting next week.
And so on the 28th, we will be asked to approve this handbook. The other handbooks are also frequently provided to us, but by rule, this is only where we're actually going to do it. So I'll open the floor to questions, if there are any. Yes?
So this is going to come up a little bit later as part of our report out for Policy Subcommittee around the joint effort that we have with Dear J. So the one thing that I am kind of taking from that experience and then going back through the handbook is through the lens of prioritizing the Equity Audit recommendations. So one of the things that they highlighted for us is that, and we've had these conversations as recently as the last school committee meeting, policy is policy, operations are operations, and handbooks can be a way for the school committee to further communicate our vision. So to that end, it would be really fantastic to see future iterations of the handbook use consistent inclusive language. So that would be gender neutral pronouns, as well as inclusive parent guarding language, which is used in the Equity Audit, and I can give references for future planning. So that's one major thing. But I would also want to see if there's a way for us to be able to integrate, maybe for this one, and I don't know that that's possible, and I understand completely if it's not. We just adopted the Educational Equity Policy, JBB. And I do think trying to capture the spirit of that policy in the handbook to be an important, like, next step. So again, I don't necessarily know that we would have the time and the space to do it for this future, this current proposed option, but I would like to see that for future iterations. Thank you, Edmira. Like, future things, like linking a few different things, like the filling, report form online would be really nice to see, as well as linking the MTSS handbook and the D cap plans embedded somewhat in the handbook. Because I think a lot of people don't know where to go for all these different things that we as educators or parents know about. So making it a little more accessible, I think, for our families.
Does that include, like, your, your thoughts on both things?
Yeah.
D cap, NTSS framework?
Yep, for future, future case iteration.
We, so, and I know, Madam Chair, I would defer to you around process. But I do have time in this window to make recommended changes that are more technical like that. Those are, those are easy. Those are something that I can work with my administrative assistant, Marsha, who really does the final edit. I've looked at this document so many times, it's almost 120 pages, so I glaze over a little. But I'm happy to make technical changes and using inclusive, neutral, gender neutral language throughout. Use not parent, but caregiver, you know, that sort of, those recommended languages. I wasn't aware of JBB, so I can take a look at that as well and see where I can incorporate that. And then those links are very easy to put in into the various Student Life sections. So when you, when you go to vote next week, it would be, I could send the updated version in time to be in the packet?
That's amazing. Yes.
Yeah, that can happen.
Okay, I'm going to go to Amy and then I'll go back to you, Shondor.
Yeah, in our last meeting, and we're going to talk about this a little bit when we get to the tool, one of the things that came up in our discussion with Dear J that relates to the handbook is the Equity Audit and different things bring up, you know, the use of mediation, conflict resolution, and restorative justice, and how the school is using that, when the school is using it. And in the current policy, it lists those just very briefly, the policy, that these are things used. I feel like the handbook is where that needs to be laid out more specifically. It's really vague right now. It just says, alternative remedies may include, but shall not be limited to. So it'd be, I think it'd be great as a school to show our values here, like, how are we using these? And like, how much, like, you know, and when are we using those? I feel like it could be laid out a little bit more specifically in the Code of Conduct section.
What page are you on?
That is 69. And that was, that was also a recommendation from Dear J. That was something we discussed at the last meeting.
And I think that page 69 talks, and I think, Kate, you guys probably know more about this than we do, but the state of Massachusetts has just recently engaged by more limiting suspensions in public high schools because they were found to be discriminatory and arbitrarily applied, et cetera. So they've made it harder to suspend kids, and for very good reason. And so I think that this section called Problem Resolution, it says, as amended by Master and Roll Law, it almost seems like this is in there now, which is great. And maybe it was in there last year, because it's not blue. However, I think that the pages right above it, I think the five pages above it are also disciplinary explanations. And it's almost like the two things need to get married. Because above, there's like a chart that talks about like scenarios, like nature of the offense. But it's not really restorative consequences. And so I think that next, next time, you're not going to do this.
This one would not be also to be heard for next, like, next week or next, this next week.
This is purely feedback for next time. This is one of the big ones that I had because this is a policy thinking group brought forward.
Yes.
The disciplinary practices of the district need to move more toward that last year renovation in Master and Roll Law and marrying it all together.
What I will, what I will share from, from the administrative side of things, and Dan, jump in, is we use restorative practices. That's our go-to. And both Mr. Walker, Ms. Boulay, and actually Dean Kaiser, as a matter, have some experience in training. Janine in particular has gone through some deep training in restorative circles, and she's done some training for us. That's our go-to for, for when we're, when we're working with students who have interpersonal conflicts with each other. And you can jump in and see if we have restorative and-
Yeah, I would say that's our, definitely our first approach.
Yeah, I would say that's our definitely our first approach to dealing with issues at the school, you know, student to student, student to teacher. We're doing a lot of restorative practices, the harm circles, the peer mediation, sitting down with teacher and student, trying to resolve issues and move forward. I think you'll see our, at the end of this year, our suspension rate has gone way down. So I think that's all positive stuff. And I do feel it's the culture of the school has become more positive also. And I feel that when I'm at the high school amongst the students.
So I feel like the, the wording in the handbook then needs to be that revised because our practices have changed. And so Ava, I wish you were going to be with me. I might be calling you.
No, don't worry, I'll come back.
But so that that's, I'll take your recommendation to our school council and say that this is a section that we really need to dig into for next year. Thank you.
Madam Chair, can I jump in?
Please.
I can't tell when you can see me or not. So yeah, so I'm like, I don't know if the little yellow hand is going to work on this.
No.
Madam Chair, you were referring to chapter 71, 37, 8 and 3/4, which is the updated that law. And while we have a citation of that, I think we can walk that language forward pretty easily in the handbook as well.
Yeah, I mean, I, I had actually pulled this out too many, so it was like pages 64 to 68 feel like the old version of how we used to do business. And then so like just, you know, pulling it all together. It's not to say that detention isn't still part of the formula, people, but you know, we probably just need to mix it up.
In the more minor department, I really like in some places you have links to the policies when you reference them, but not everywhere. So.
We, that's a quick one that we can fix as well. And mind you, in the, in the, at the end of the handbook, when it goes through all of the state, we were, we were actually not, we were told not to put links from, from our DESI folks. We needed full text with no links. So when we had, they came for a program review and we had to, the handbook almost doubled in size because we needed the full text and instructed not to put links in. So I, I, we could put links in to our own policies. And so I think that that, that's fine, which I can do.
And not to be pedantic, but it's my nature, I guess. In page 64, second paragraph, the Chromebook of policy, that link is wrong and the path to the policy is wrong. And I did actually find it, but I sort of had a question. I know in some districts, there's now, I think it's a TikTok trend of intentionally damaging Chromebooks. And I don't know if there's anything in this policy about that particular concern.
There is not. I think it falls under the general treating your Chromebook with, with respect and care. I will fix that link. I've made a notation in there. The TikTok challenges come frequently. I don't think we could reference every single one that would be inappropriate for, for school, but potentially a reference to TikTok challenges in general.
Well, I was talking about more intentionally damaging your Chromebook as a, then there ought to be consequences.
Yes. Thankfully, that none of that has happened in Neshola.
And if I may, Mr. Sign, our, except we'll use policy that everyone has designed memorializes that as well. Awesome.
Oh, very good. Any other questions?
Just a very minor one. On page 13, speaking about like languages and terms we want to use, or it says homeless, could we change that to unhoused or a different term?
Any other questions? Amy.
Yeah, I was just trying to compare the handbook to some of the recommendations that came out of our discussion last meeting with regard to attendance. And, you know, the policy that we approved is pretty explicit about what happens if a student has more than a certain number of consecutive absences. And the handbook has a lot of discussion on student absence. But the policy says that student absences.
This is policy JH.
JH. Must be, it says accordingly, parents guardians will provide a written explanation for the absence or tardiness of their child. Well, I'm, I'm looking at the handbook and it's quite possible that I've missed it. I don't see in here where it says how you are to report those absences to the school district. I know it's pretty like basic and common sense, but I, I don't know if that's part of what the disconnect was between the policy and the practice.
I'd like to jump in here if you don't mind, Madam Chair.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, looking at that, we recognize that was part of some summertime work and we're revising the protocol that applies to that policy as we got to look at that at a K to 12 all the way level. So when we bring that to the committee, most likely at our first meeting in the fall, because we want, we're going to launch the year, President, you know, RQV, the performance of that protocol. So we recognize from the recent policy to do some updates there. So I don't want to put the high school ahead of the rest of the districts on that one as we look at that together.
Okay, I think it's just also just about like the protocol, that what's expected for reporting an absence to of your student, you know, like just not, not as much about getting to the 10 mark. It's just more, there's a lot of discussion on absences, but not the steps that parents should be taking to document things or notify school.
Amy, are you thinking of more like a how to? If your child is going to be out.
Yeah, you know, because I think that's.
Here's the number, here's the email.
Yeah, I would, I mean, most parents email the office to Ms. Slade. There are very few students that are absent at Neshola that have not been notified by the school on a daily basis. So in the morning, you know, we do our attendance in the morning by 9:30, we try to do a blast out to the community for students we are unaccounted for that are not either in school or people haven't notified us. That's a very small number every day and sometimes is zero. So most student, most parents and families are notifying us regularly through email. Occasionally there'll be phone calls that come in, but email is the primary way that parents communicate with the, the office attendance.
That's how I do it, but I think it might just be good to memorialize it in here for new parents moving into the district or just the.
Yeah. And there is a specific NRH attendance email address for that as well.
It's in my speed dial. I think if you go to the high school, you probably have used it. Is this about a time structure? It is not. So I actually want to build a little bit on Amy's since you brought it up because I also was narrowing in on this because of our last policy conversation and I just wanted to bring it up. I already mentioned it to Kate. So on page 23, if you guys want to reference this, you can see that I think our school council at the high school has added this blue text called attendance contract. And this is for the kids, I think, who, yeah, who are chronically absent, meaning they have reached that 10% threshold of 18 days in a year or nine days in a semester.
Or portion of the year.
Or percentage.
Yes.
Right.
Yes.
So that attendance contract is, I think, trying to bridge the gap that so that if a child is absent for 10 consecutive days, the way that I looked all this up today and it's kind of a disaster because I think most of it was passed before COVID. Some of it was updated during COVID and the mental health crisis that our teenagers are experiencing right now is not reflected in the law. And so it doesn't make any reference toward kids who are school refusal engaged. And so the 10 day, the way that the law is written is that if a kid is absent for 10 straight days, you are responsible for reaching out to them. You have five days to do it and setting up a meeting with the parents of that child who's been out for 10 days. And you only have five days to have that meeting. And on the, on the 15th day, that's when the exit interview letter goes out, which is a horrifying letter to receive as a parent who's trying to care for a kid who's refusing to go to school. Oftentimes, these kids are those with IPs and 504s, so they have additional protections. I'm very worried about those who are unidentified. And so I think what you're trying to do with this blue text is manage from a protocol perspective, how we help kids who are in that gray area that the law is like not helping and you're trying to create a Band-Aid. So can you talk just a little bit about that text and about this 10 day piece and how you have to actually unenroll kids on the 15th day from our high school if they are refusing to go to school?
I can speak to that. That's a policy. We have the withdrawal notice that goes out with the opportunity for the exit interview after 10 straight days. In my, in the last two years, I've done one of those. It's a pretty rare occurrence. There are kids out for 10 consecutive days for reasons that we know about, medical issues or partial hospitalization or other reasons. Obviously, we work with the families in that matter. We don't send out the notices when we know what's going on. This is more of, you know, a situation where a kid's not coming to school. We've been in contact with the parents frequently. Most, I would say every kid that once they get to five absences in the first quarter, we've contacted families, we are having meetings, we're trying to figure out what the issues are. But there are situations where we know that the kids are not going to return to school and this is the process that's followed.
But this allows you to make accommodation.
Yes.
For that maybe one or two, I mean, at other schools, that's in dozens of letters that might be going out on a, on a yearly basis. You're lucky that, I'm really happy here, it's only one that we've written in the last couple of years. But for that too, who is struggling, this is to help that family reconnect in a way that is not harmful.
Yeah, we reach out to the, the families frequently. The attendance contracts are not for kids that are missing 10 straight days facing the withdrawal. These are students that might miss, you know, two days every week and they're have very inconsistent attendance. And we're trying to partner with the families and come up with ways to show improvement to really get kids to come to school so that we can help support them.
Because you, basically what you're saying is that no, no student would miss 10 straight days without you having been already in contact with them.
Correct. Yep, mo- most of the attendance contracts come in with kids that have very inconsistent attendance. You know what? Again, they're missing 20 days in a semester or are, you know, great, going towards 40, 50 days of absences for different reasons outside of medical and other things that are, you know, approved by the school.
Madam Chair, if I can jump in for a moment?
Please do.
Just as a point of clarification, and that is what's written in Mass General Law doesn't speak to the 10 days. It's seven days over a six month period, the five consecutive. And then it turns it back to the local authority for having a policy on how you treat those moments. So you can see that in chapter 76, section 1B, that so the good news of that is the discussion we're having to that does exactly what the Massachusetts law is pointing us to do.
So Kurt, let me ask you this. If, if Mass General Law does not require you to, to after the 10 consecutive absence, send that exit interview letter, why do we? I, I thought that that was in the law.
No, it, it's not in the law that you have to send that letter on the 10th day. Those are school committee policies. It is a standard that is utilized all across the state. And so it, you know, it's that seven days within a six month period. So if you extrapolate that out 10 days over the course of a year, that's kind of where that I think was the genesis of that. But that is not specifically cited in Mass General Law. So with that, because we have to follow, you know, school attendance regulations, this, this is why we have these policies where we work with families. So even our policy, it doesn't say the student is exited after 10 days. It says that the principal has the authority to, but it doesn't say that they specifically have to. So I think that's an important distinction.
Okay, I think that I read it in DESI guidance though, that that exit interview letter, like that language exists and that it's really on the 15th day that the child is unenrolled.
Right, that's, that's in guidance. That's not in Mass General Law.
Okay.
So that's essentially some of those guidance documents we get from DESI are to provide best practices on how to apply the law.
So do you think that this is something that you'll be taking up in that summer retreat around attendance protocol?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. It's already on our agenda. It's on, it's on the magic board for the things to work on this summer and we'll be bringing that to the committee the first meeting.
Okay, thank you. Somebody else have their hand up? Go ahead, Jackie.
So again, I think this is a future consideration. There's reference to fee structures and if students have financial, require financial assistance, assistance then it ties a lot to scholarships. But I think it would be important for us to reference the current activities structure, fee structure that we have as a district or reference where families can access that fee structure and then where, who would be their appropriate point of contact should they require financial assistance.
Great, that's easy enough, probably. Thanks, Kate.
That currently does, does happen for, for students. Typically, our, either the administrative team or the guidance is, is typically the, the point for, for those. But I, I like your suggestion to memorialize it in the handbook.
Right, because I think there's, there are families who are known and there are families who are not known. And especially with an influx of new families, I would want to make sure that they knew who to go to. The only other last question that I had was around the positive climate plan that was linked in and was that something that would be updated next academic year or the following academic year?
That's the district is a, it's the district's positive climate plan, not the high school. So I would defer to superintendent, assistant superintendent friend or superintendent Downing on that.
I mean, I think, I don't know if superintendent Downing wants to speak to me. The district positive climate plan was most recently reviewed on a coordinated program review. So as is our process to continue to review those processes. It was most recently updated as part of that process. So that was 2023.
Any other questions, Amy?
Recognizing that this is something that maybe could be put on the list for things to review in the next cycle. The language that's on our school district's calendar.
Can I get a pause on that really quickly? Alita, as you're taking the minutes, can you, I know that Kate is probably putting this in her file to consider next year. Can we memorialize in the minutes, the couple of things that you've said so far that we would like to have addressed in the next go around so we don't lose it? And so I think that Jackie, you identified the Dear J, the looking at the student equity lens.
Yep.
Amy said something similar.
Well, specifically on the mediation, conflict resolution.
Discipline practices.
Yeah, discipline and restorative practices.
Yeah. That's something that is still on practice.
So Madam Chair, thinking to next year when I come to present, right?
Yeah, exactly. So like when we, when, when we're sit, not Amy, but when we're all sitting here next June or May, we can pull these minutes up and say, these are the things that we know that Kate is addressing in the next go around. So equity lens, restorative practices, melding with the disciplinary structure.
Yes, it doesn't just seem like an addendum very quickly thrown in.
And then you have another long-term thing, go ahead.
Well, yeah, following up and so it doesn't, so they're more kind of streamlined so that the handbook becomes a resource for capturing all of the protocols. Our district calendar has a lot of language on it right now about administrators and teachers scheduling events with consideration given to religious holidays and cultural traditions and makeup privileges for work that is missed during those. And I feel like the handbook is really where that language should live for students and for administrators and teachers. So I would love to see the language that we already have either be, you know, like replicated within the handbook or housed within the handbooks as opposed to being on, or in addition to being on the calendar. So there's just a disconnect. When you read the handbook and you go to the policy on makeup privileges. When you read the handbook and you go to the policy on makeup privileges, it doesn't include any of that language.
I think that's a perfect place for it.
So.
Thank you for that recommendation.
Any other comments? I have a couple. But much of it's been taken already Kate, so that's good news. Just a couple of quick ones. The math requirement in the program of studies that you linked through handbook is three years?
Yes.
But UMass is four. Are we trying to be with the UMass?
So right now, what's in the handbook and in program studies matches school committee policy for.
It's perfect.
For math.
So, okay, I'll take that up with Kirk maybe because I thought we wanted to stay with the UMass system's minimum requirements. And if kids are graduating to Shoba with only three years of math thinking they're going to apply to UMass, they're not.
Yeah, I've seen that be a problem.
Most of our students take four years of math. So in practice, it's happening. If we want to be math core aligned, four years of math would, would be recommended. And, and so we now just, we are aligned with what is current school committee policy.
Okay, so policy subcommittee, can you please put a little note for some future Bernie? It's really Jackie and Sean Dore and Robin. Okay, so science is a three-year requirement as well. UMass requires the three years that they take to be lab-seniors.
Labs, correct.
Is the freshman physical science class allowed?
Yes.
Science, thank you. I just want to make that clear. And I don't think in the program of studies it actually identifies physically lab science. And so that's a different story that I just want to throw it out there. The other thing I wanted to say, and I really should have said it when the science team was here, is that I'm concerned in program studies that we are continuing to capture six credits for our science classes. And here's why. My kid in particular wanted to take a six-credit science class. It would prevent him from taking an art class. And so that kind of thing feels like we are privileging one department over another. And I just wanted to plant the seed a little bit that I don't think science should take up six credits, even though they're super important and powerful classes.
Yeah, we're, we're having, we're having those programming conversations.
Thank you.
Right, and so when I, when I come back next year, probably January timeframe is when I typically come for the program of studies presentation, you'll likely see some adjustments there.
Got it. My next thing quickly is that there is, it seems to be a plagiarism hotline in the, on page 21. I think it says individuals may report instances of cheating plagiarism to the following anonymous email. It seems to me that if I was sending it to this anonymous email, you would still know my name.
I've never, I think I've seen it, but I've never heard of that. I wouldn't email it.
Do you see this one?
I see it's right there in the blue link.
I bet you don't get a lot of business there.
I don't even know who gets the email.
However, so I don't know that anonymous reports on plagiarism are even appropriate because kids these days are clever and, you know, all kinds of ways to hurt each other.
That's easy one to.
Okay, I'm, I'm arguing maybe we remove that. Let me see, hold on. Page 25. On page 25, there just seems to be a typo where, do you see where at the very top under true and see it's that school cancellation captured in there? I think that just needs to enter, hit enter.
Oh, yep, actually, that should be a subheading.
Subheading?
Yep.
Okay, cool. Everybody loves a good school cancellation. What else? I'm just trying to, oh, on page 37, Kate. I'm speeding so I know we don't have any time. On page 37, it talks about sports eligibility. And I feel like maybe my eyes were crossing like you were saying earlier. Does it say in here like what grades the kids have to get to remain eligible? It says they have to take four, it says.
They have to be passing the equivalent of four academic classes, yeah.
So they have to have a D or better?
Yes. That's MIAA.
I don't know that it says passing anywhere in here and, and I might've just missed it. It says that they have to be taking a major course equivalency. It also talks about English courses. It keeps talking about.
That's where, do you work on this, did you or no?
We did work on this section last year to align to the MIAA policy and recommendations. I'm not sure if the word passing is in there, but that is obviously the expectation. Kids are passing the equivalent of four full-year classes.
And the MIAA uses the standard of English classes, which are year-long as like their standard. And so it says the equivalent of, and so that's really taken from the MIAA. So our students have to pass four, four major classes.
And so it says here that students have to have security grade. So I'm looking at the second bottom from the bullet, from the bottom, second bullet from the bottom. It says students must have security grade in four major courses. So it could have gotten an F.
So that should be passing.
Passing.
Passing, and I think it also speaks to incompletes. Students have incompletes that affects eligibility until they're rectified.
I did see that. An incomplete grade is treated as an F. So got that. But I think you just need to maybe insert the word passing.
Passing, yep.
Not that I have personal experience with this or anything. So the other question I have for you is in the red line, I'm sorry, I'm writing the page. Under searches.
Oh wait, I'm just going to go to the top and go to.
Now, page 44, Kate.
Thank you.
The red line talks about when you guys can search kids. And the blue text is like, I think, far more appropriate. And I, and I know you did this because it's in line with new policy, et cetera.
Yep, I took this right from, directly from policy, copy paste.
Got it. Okay, so here's my only issue and maybe my issues with public, with policy. Is that you, what has been removed is the term reasonable suspicion. And so as I read the new blue text, and clearly I'm reading my own policy, it doesn't seem to say when you can search kids. And the Supreme Court says it's if you have reasonable suspicion, which is super vague. And maybe it's not much of a protection at all, but it's something. And I wonder why we removed it in policy language and why MSAC did it. So maybe, Alita, you could mark this for me in the minutes, that this is a policy issue in the searches by staff. And how it no longer says that staff can search only when they have reasonable suspicion. I'm concerned about that. Not that the concern is real, but, okay.
Madam Chair, I'm only speculating. I want to know if, you know, recognition on the MSAC there, if you will assume that more is perentive of school system.
Yeah, but.
Like suspicion.
But the Supreme Court says even when you're in control of the kids, you can't search them unless the search is reasonable. So I think what's important.
With reasonable suspicion.
Yeah. Yep, and it, and it also protects our administrators. So I think it's good for both, for both parties. I think my last issue is, oh, I just had it. Oh, and this is a bigger one. And Kate, this is going to definitely be something that you and I have talked about in the past. And I know that it's on your radar, but I just want to kind of put it at the front of the radar. And it appears on page 20. And it's kind of just buried in the disciplinary, our academic integrity section. And I know you're going to be looking at this for all the AI craziness that's never going to go away. Under first offense, it says that the students shall, may, you've changed it to shall.
No, may.
Oh, may, so it's not automatic. May receive a zero grade on an assignment at the first offense. So I just want to make a plug that there is a movement right now to eliminate the zero because it is insanely punitive. Because instead of giving the kids an F on an assignment, you're giving them like a K because it drops it down 60 points, their grade, and it's unrecoverable. And so I would argue that, and I would hope that all public schooling, including my own, but, but our, but Neshoba especially, can work toward eliminating the zero, both in the handbook and in our pedagogy. Because it's really punitive. And I know we've talked about this and it's a philosophical conversation. So I just want to throw it into the public record that this is a long-term thing that I'd like to have looked at for the academic integrity.
Thank you. I know in practice, some teachers will give an alternate assignment. And that even happened, that happens at Neshoba. So that, that there's, the may reflects that. And I think it's a good conversation for us to dig into because we're an alarming organization.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay, guys, I had stolen all that time. I hope you don't mind, but I felt strongly about it. The handbook is important. I think that we are going to move now away from this if we're, if everybody's okay with that. Okay, thank you so much, Mr. Wolf.
Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation, such harper. Now we're going to talk a little bit about the high school engagement survey, which Kate also has to share with us. And so Kate, what can you tell us about what you're doing at the high school even more?
Possibly, yes, if you could put that presentation up there. So as the committee knows, we have been focusing on improving student engagement for the last three years. We, when we sort of initially gave the Panorama survey, our student engagement self-reporting, their, their sense of engagement and belonging was incredibly low, almost single digits low, based on Panorama metrics and data. And, and, and that was something that we, was alarming, quite frankly. And we, that we saw it as, as a charge for, for us as the adults to really take some intentional steps to improve that sense of engagement within the classroom and globally. And, and there may be a connection, you know, coming out of the pandemic that might, I think, the youth mental health crisis is, is a component. We know historically and just generally, engagement levels go down as students go up in grades as well. So Neshoba not only was reflecting that trend, but was really, you know, not in a good way, leading that trend, right? And so over the last three years, we have taken some very intentional steps from a curricular standpoint, from a best practice and instructional standpoint, as well as a school culture, student voice, elevating student, student voice and input and, and school culture and community building side of things. So we really, it's, this has been multifaceted. The Panorama survey results were still not yielding data that we really felt was helpful, other than that, the number. And so last year, we got approval to, to really break things down and administer, create our own with some carryover questions from Panorama specifically related to engagement. And then each department designed a, really a custom survey for, for their content area, for their student experience. Shared questions so that there could be some crossover and some comparison. But then tailored questions for, for them. So really asking about the lab experience or music performance or, you know, so really tailored questions. I will say that, that last year, we, we saw, and this is, you know, that last year was year two in, in this work, we saw improvement over the fall of 2023. And so I'd like to walk you through the 2025 results and kind of, I'll preface in next slide, Alita, please, what, what you'll see. So again, last year, we refined our survey methodology, administered department-specific surveys. Students took in each of their classes. They, they took the survey this year of, in the several weeks prior to April vacation. Last year, we learned invaluable insights that helped shape future goals and instructional strategies. Our instructional goals, that, this is an instructional goal to work on student engagement. It is written in, in teacher's teach point feedback and we launched the year with, with these goals. We continued this methodology again this year, two weeks prior to April vacation. And what you'll see in the pie chart, so I used a tool to help aggregate all of the departments. Would not be beneficial to sort of show comparative data department to department that I don't think would be, would be productive or beneficial. Each department, I'll tell, I'll tell you later what each department is going to be doing and how they're addressing this. So the pie charts using a tool is an aggregate of all student results over all department for the five questions. There were four from the original Panorama survey. And then one question that my Panorama working group, we had a district working group for Panorama, and my working group created really around the connection between engagement and belonging. So that's the overview. So Alita, slide three. So this first question is, the question is, how eager are you to participate in your, and then subject is in parentheses. So when a student took that survey in their math class, they saw math class. So how eager, and, and one piece of feedback I would say that we actually got from students around Panorama is they found it really hard to answer the questions because they were like, well, which class are you talking about? I don't, so I'm just going to put two or I'm going to put three because I don't, I don't know. It depends. So, and there is variability in, in student interest. I myself is a humanities kid, so. But when we aggregate this together, what we see is that if you count three, and this was a philosophical sort of difference that we have with Panorama. If you count three in the, in the positive, because it's somewhat positive, then we see 78% of our students responded positively or somewhat positively to this question. If we take the three out and have that living in the middle, we still have 45.6% of our students responding positively. That is an increase significantly over early Panorama survey results, truly is. And then we have 21.6% of our students responding less favorably or negatively. Those students, we, you know, that group of students, even though it's not the majority, it's a sizable minority. We still want to dig into what's going on, what's the experience with those students. But I'm happy to see that there is, there is improvement and it's been steady improvement in this area. And I will say that I, I happened to pull a message that I sent to families last spring. And I'll be doing the same thing later this month. In the, in the fall of 2023, we ended up doing Panorama twice or Panorama and then Google survey. But in the fall of 2023, students reported, and this was reports of, of threes, fours and fives, was 60%. So we're at, what did I say?
Seventy-four.
Seventy-eight percent. So increase from the fall of, of 2023 with this particular, with this particular area, this question. And you can see how the questions, they don't use the word engagement. They talk about what your engagement could look like within a classroom. You're excited to go to class. You lose track of time. You, you know, you like your class, you want to participate. So, Alita, next slide. Question was how excited are you about going to your subject class? Very somewhat not at all. If you take three, four and five as positive or somewhat positive, that's 81.5% of our students reported being, responding positively or somewhat positively. By comparison, the fall of 2023, that was 51% scoring and responding three, four, five. If we just take fours and fives, which is the very positive, that's 46, 46.1% of our students. And then in responding less favorably, 18.5% of students did respond less favorably. Similar to the last question, we want to dig in there. And, and, we want to dig in there a little bit, a little bit more. Alita, next slide. This question, I feel like if students are there, they get so focused, they're in the flow, right? They're, they're in the zone. So how often do you get so focused in your classes that you lose track of time? We had again, threes, fours and fives. And I didn't capture this one from the fall of 2023, so I actually want to go back and look. But 74, need my readers, 74.5% of students. But 74, need my readers, 74.5% of students responded favorably or somewhat favorably, with 25.5% less favorable. That's a little higher than the other two, so we want to really dig in here. And I will pause to say that much like last year, elective classes had stronger engagement, performance-based classes. You had your bands and your art. Those naturally, I think, are a little higher, right? And then if you're playing music, you get in that flow, right? And then, I guess, I said 25.5% less favorable, that we would like to dig into a little bit there. Alita, next slide. I think we missed. Yes. Overall, how interested, so this is big picture, how interested are you in your classes? And in this case, 84.1% of students responded favorably or somewhat favorably. When we take the threes out, that's 51.8. That is an increase over last year and in the fall of '23. And then 15.9% less favorable, and that's the lowest number of these four Panorama questions. And this is really quite exciting for me. Again, still want to dig in to the 15.9% of students and what their experience is. And the departments have information that gets disaggregated by the self-reported grades that the students get and other demographic data. And so that is on the department level, digging in to those, those kinds of trends. Alita, next slide. So when students took the survey, this next question, they saw this description. So this was what our Panorama working group, along with myself, created, a descriptor of a connection between engagement and belonging and identifying qualities. So positive and engaged learning happens in classrooms where their small and large successes are celebrated for all students, consistent expectations for learning and behavior exist, cultural connections are acknowledged and respected. I, as a student, am understood and appreciated for more than just my academic skills, so I'm known and valued. My strengths are recognized and my growth is fostered. And then structures for learning are upheld to protect my safety and success as a learner. So what a welcoming, and what a welcoming classroom looks like that fosters belonging. So they had that descriptor, and then they had to answer the next question. So keep the descriptor in mind. And next slide, Alita, please. And so the above conditions exist in my classes. And this one, I truly was very pleased with because I need my readers, it's so bad. Just keep them on. 96.1% of our students responded favorably or somewhat favorably. And then when we even take the threes out, it's 77.9%. And then 3.8% responded less favorably. We want to know who those students are and really kind of dig in. Students' names are not in the survey, so we won't know who they are. But we really, we need to really dig in because we want each and every student to feel those qualities and experience those qualities. And so we want to, we want to dig in there because each and every means each and every. But I will say that from the initial administration of the Panorama surveys with sense of belonging in almost the single digits, I'm really so pleased with this. It demonstrates the intentionality and the care and the dedication of efforts on all fronts with, with students and for students. And that, you know, we want Nishoba to, above all, be a welcoming and safe community where all of our students, each and every one of our students feels that they are, that they are, they belong. And so this, this one, I was very pleased to share with you guys. Alita, next slide, looking at key themes. So students had a lot of opportunity in those department-specific questions to write. They provided a lot of feedback. So key themes that we pulled out were that things that drive strong engagement are projects and hands-on activities, group work, fosters collaboration and idea sharing. Students appreciate choice and autonomy, so choice and voice. One really key theme, and maybe this one should have been first because that real-world relevance, connection, why are we learning this? What is the, how is this connected to me? Adds purpose and interest, opportunities for that creative output, connects with that top on projects, but videos, podcasts, any way that students could express their, their learning in a way that was maybe different from writing an essay or taking a test, increased engagement. And that's an ideal principle in means of expression, right? And then for both the 2024 and 2025 surveys demonstrated improved engagement from, from prior surveys. And our students did report a high level of belonging. So all, all great things. However, there were other themes that students highlighted. So Alita, next slide, please. So key things that students identified as really hindering engagement, low engagement for more passive learning formats, such as very long lectures where students are sitting and listening, and it's not, it's not really engaging for them. Any assignment that might seem unconnected to a bigger theme, a unit question, a major goal, or just a higher, more clear purpose lowered engagement. If students didn't understand the why behind the work, it lowered engagement. I will say a theme, and Leah, you and I have talked about this, workload was also a theme that popped as something that really weighed students down in terms of impacting engagement. Could be fatigue, stress, all of those factors, but workload was reported, and that was a theme that was highlighted. Mentioned before, students did, and this was something that happened in our 2024. It's not, not surprising that students report higher levels of engagement in elective departments, more performance-based, we know this. And the, and the critical question is, how do we, how do we make some instructional shifts where learning can become a little more performance-based in our other areas? And we're, we're taking steps to that with our deeper learning initiatives. And I'll go to the, the next slide, you'll see some student quotes that are just the four representative quotes. I like when we work on real issues. It felt meaningful. Group projects made the class fun. We shared ideas. Hard to care about worksheets that feel pointless. And when we get to make something, I actually want to learn. So real student quotes that, that really represent those key takeaways on both what we're doing well and areas we need to dig in and improve. And we know this. These are things that, that have come up in multiple areas of our reflective process. And Alita, the final slide, if you wouldn't mind. Our next step. So I'm making this presentation to you all. I shared some high-level data with, with staff at our staff meeting last week, and departments are unpacking their specific survey results. They'll, they'll generate shared goals, some action items, they're digging in. At either our last leadership meeting, or we are hosting a high school-specific leadership retreat at the end of August. So not sure of quite the timing, but we'll engage in a debrief and share out with the leadership team to look at themes across departments, and then probably align a little bit with some of our goals and actions, action items. We're going to continue. You're going to see this in our school improvement plan. Again, it's important. We got to stay the course to maintain a school-wide focus on continuing to improve and deepen student engagement and belonging. I personally, I didn't write this on here, but I think it's important for us to really dig into our subgroups, our students with disabilities, our students of color, our multilingual learners. That data is in the survey, reported, that demographic data is there. So I think really digging in to those, those subgroups to see what, what structural things and programmatic things we can be shifting and adjusting to help increase engagement and belonging with those more marginalized groups of students. And then we're going to continue to focus on aspects of the instructional core related to student engagement, well-structured lessons, as well as meeting the diverse needs of our students. And this language, it comes right from our, our T2 tool, our, our evaluation tool. It's our focus elements. And this is going into feedback for, for teachers to help focus in on goals and work for next year as well. And with that, thank you so much for letting me present, and I'm happy to take questions.
Wonderful. Thank you so much, Kate. So I'll go around, go ahead, Amy.
Yeah, I just had a question about, you said that this is part of their, like, their goals for their directions. Is that right?
We have, we have a high school goal for improving engagement, and then departments have, last year, this year, created shared department goals.
Okay. I was just curious then about the slide seven or whatever it was, where it said you gave specific things like small, large successes are celebrated, consistent expectations for learning and behaviors. Are those then part of the things that teachers are working on for their evaluations? Is that why those items are on there?
The Panorama working group, which was comprised of three or four teachers, this was back in, Laura, and you have to help my timeline, 2023. Yeah. When we were working with the district Panorama working group, this was what qualities of a, of a, of a safe and welcoming classroom that promoted belonging and engagement. That working group created those qualities, and that went into the student survey.
Oh, okay. But it's not, it's not moving over into, like, are there?
It's not been in, it's not been in goals, although increasing belonging 100% has been a school-wide goal. Engagement and belonging are intrinsically, intrinsically linked, so.
I just didn't know if it was like unpacked, you guys had like specific things that you were working on for like engagement and belonging, I guess is what I was asking.
I mean, I think well-structured lessons, making sure a lesson has goals and objectives, so students know the why behind the learning. Making sure that our instructional moves enhance deeper learning, and that's been through kaleidoscope. You heard today from two of our fantastic department heads that the math department is, is really moving forward with building thinking classrooms, and that is having students doing the thinking and, and working together collaboratively to solve problems. And our science department has absolutely embraced the NGSS work and, and it's breathing life into their, into their lessons as well. So it's happening in different ways depending on the department. Thanks. I would say, I'll give a history example. I, and I don't know if any of you have received these, but our juniors are deep in their civics project, and I am, I am fielding questions about topics of interest that are school-based. They're really digging in, and I've had a couple of students say to me that one student, his civics project is to have a civics engagement project every year. So that was one. And then another student said, this, I'm learning about rotary, and I, this is really cool and important to me, and all student drivers, I'm so happy I'm doing this. So like, that's a history example of the civics project. Kids are digging in, and they're, they're working.
That's good.
Yeah.
I'm going to interrupt and just say, building that, to say that that fourth bullet, I think, is maybe what Amy was talking about, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that the understanding and appreciating kids for more than what they can produce academically is what creates belonging and engagement. And I mean, the, the data says on slide eight that the kids are finding these bullets in their core classes. I don't necessarily think that this data syncs with the other data. And so that's a question mark for me because they're saying that they, I actually would put the red, the sometimes. Even if I'm going to be generous, maybe you split it down the middle, and you give half to the good and half to the bad. So if, if that's somewhat, for half of the respondents was bad, it would be for me. Some of class happened, you guys. I actually think that if they don't like, if they're not interested in their core class, but they are seeing some of those bullets in their core class, that's a disconnect for me in the data. So I would want to dig into that a little bit more, maybe ask more questions.
You can go. I just wanted to piggyback off of that kind of. I wonder like how we could make this survey more specific? Because, for example, I take two science classes. I take bioethics with Mrs. Peer, and I take chem. And I love bioethics, but I hate chem. And I think, especially, and Mr. Melbourne, those are probably my two favorite classes just because there's so much group work and like, you really feel belonged. But an example for my chem class, like, I don't know, there's just so much work, like, this is for, pretend I'm not a student rep. I'm in like an unrecoverable spot right now, so it just makes me more, less engaged. So when it comes to taking a survey, like, I don't, I don't really know. Like, I'm always in the middle because I love bioethics, chem, like.
So you would put three, is what you're saying?
Yeah, so I'm always on the three. So I like, I feel bad because you never really know. So I wonder like, if you could make a survey for core classes and then like your electros. But then it's also a lot of surveys.
The computer can do it, right?
Yeah.
It's great, you got. So that's somewhat category is a huge question mark for me.
I, I like, I like being able to follow the data year on year and some of those common questions. I do wonder, and I don't, I don't have an answer for this, just wondering, are we at a point where, are we looking to shift the questions to really kind of deepen our understanding? I don't have a good answer for that because I like the consistency of some of the questions, and those engagement questions from the Panorama platform have been vetted. They might seem a little weirdly worded to some people, but they've been vetted to get into what, what engagement looks like, you know what I mean? So I, I think we need to, I need to work with my leadership team kind of around this. We, we want to continue to get student input to help us reflect and, and revise, right? And refine and improve.
So first, I think it's awesome you're collecting and looking at all this data around engagement and belonging, and that, that is important and awesome. There's something I'm struggling with a little bit on the aggregating the different subjects together. And also, because it sounds like there's separate surveys being sent out, and they're anonymous, that there's really no way of correlating data. I'd be worried about if we have a population of students that are unengaged in all of their classes. Because that feels very different than being unengaged in one of your classes. And when the data is aggregated, I don't see a way of seeing that. I have seen some schools do these surveys, not anonymous, but keeping it, making us sort of promise to students that it's anonymous to their teachers. So it's just that the district, the administration can correlate data and do things with it. But it isn't that if I say I hate my chemistry class, I'm not engaged, as an example, that it doesn't get associated with a student or a teacher hearing that, right?
In this particular case, teachers actually sent the link to their student. That's how we had students take, like, if I'm, if I'm Kate Boynton, I'm taking my math, history, science, English, French class, my teacher gave, put the link probably in the Google Classroom. And that's, that's how the survey was administered. We, we did do anonymous Panorama, pushed out globally to, but I think your point is really interesting because I too want to know who those students are, who, who maybe are disengaged and don't feel belong, don't feel a sense of belonging across the board.
As a benefit, you don't have to ask any demographic questions if you know who people are. So it's faster to take the survey.
So something, Laura, maybe you and I can, with Kirk, can dig in on around that.
I'll just say that I think the department data is really important. I respect you not sharing that with us because it's delicate. So I'm not going to push for it, but I think that I'm glad you are looking at it by department, which was a change you made last year, and it's great.
Not only looking at it by department, but our department heads are coming together to share their department's learning. to share their department's learning and takeaways. And so that, that's part of our, our leadership work. So we're going to talk about it. What did we come up with? Like, what did we learn? What are some noticings and wonderings? And how is, how, you know, let's take fine performing arts. What did you learn? And, and what are some of the things you're going to do about it? And so that, that would be, that will be something that our leadership comes together. And so there's going to be that cross-department sharing. And then maybe, maybe there'll be some, some like crossover where, oh, that noticing was in your department too? Oh, yeah, it's here. So we'll be sharing as, as a leadership team.
Yeah, I just want to piggyback off what Tronor was saying because I do feel like, at least with the Panorama survey data, there are districts that do not make it anonymous for subset of their, you know, their administration and more of the SEL providers. I think that one thing that you might want to consider too is we're rolling out the MTSS stuff is that you have the opportunity to know which students are reporting reduced sense of belonging and some of those wellness factors to just have, and then also to track and monitor progress over time. It's been, it's been useful. I, I can also understand wholeheartedly why we are not currently doing that.
I think we kept those same privacy settings from Panorama, right?
Guys, really quickly, before I go to Eva, it is 9:05 and I'm supposed to poll you. Can you guys just give me like 15 more minutes, please? Like, can I get a thumbs up if that's okay? Thank you. Oh my gosh, I feel like you just do me a favor. Thank you. Eva, keep it going.
Okay, I'll be really quick. Um, just going back to like the anonymous part of it, I feel like from a stu-, again, from a student perspective, the demographic questions, like, I, like, what am I going to say? I feel like it might be easy for teachers and staff to kind of pick out especially the minorities. Cause I, I put myself as Asian on all of the surveys. I feel like that's maybe not as easy, but other minorities. So keep it anonymous. And I also don't want my teachers to know what I'm saying. So I feel like it's also hard to be honest because you never really know what's anonymous. Like when I'm taking something that's quote unquote anonymous, like, I never fully believe that it is anonymous. I don't know. I don't know like how many other people think that, but yeah.
I just want to thank Eva for being so willing to share her input with all of us. Like, it's so helpful to have you there, sitting at the table and giving your perspective on all of this.
Thank you. Very proud.
I am too. Eva, why don't you sit right here?
I know. I'm trying to like come in.
My, my question is, I, I was really, I think I've learned through some of these other questions. I'm curious about, I'm, I'm glad that you were able to develop a survey that really focused on experiencing Nishoba and then measure that over time. But I, I think what I'm still a little confused about is that the data that, from this survey, how that ties to the Panorama survey because.
We have five questions. I shared four of the five questions that pulled from Panorama because I also wanted to, and, and this presentation. I was mindful of the presentation. So I polled, and this was a conversation that Kirk and Laura and I had when, when we were considering this idea of the Panorama survey wasn't really getting the data that we wanted. We heard from teachers, we heard from students. And what, what can we do? Can we do a Google survey? And we landed on, yes, Google survey where things could be customized, but for comparison, we want, we, and really because engagement was our area of focus, we picked five questions that we pulled directly from the Panorama survey. So the four questions that you see minus one, those we have given to students multiple times through that other platform. That's how it connects to Panorama.
So you just did it with, by class by class as opposed to?
Me pushing it out to the whole student body to take it once. Each department had, had their own survey. I mean, I ended up, I'll share a little of the sausage making where I, I had the, the links. We created copies of the surveys. It got rid of the student data from last year. And then each department had, had their new surveys and they could go in. And the, the understanding is we keep these core questions. And then where you customize, you could continue to customize if you wanted to. And then department heads sent the link to their teachers and everybody gave it in their classes. So kids took it multiple times. Yeah. Kids took it multiple times. It's a lot of surveying. I mean, Ava, you can attest to this, right? It's a lot. But the, the really, the, the driving force behind that was to, to get department-specific data that was actionable.
Yeah. And I think I'm kind of in Leah's camp where I feel like the three, when I'm taking the survey, if I don't feel strongly in either direction, it's a three. So I, I would, I'm just cautious about drawing too many conclusions, including a three in a positive.
Even when we look at, even when we look at the fours and fives, there's, there's improvement. Yeah. Yeah. So I mean, I captured that as well. It's somewhat you can, I'd go with split in the middle a little bit.
I think that was a great suggestion. And I guess like from a school committee point of view, I am hoping that when the school improvement plans come before us, that we can see the connection to the goals of the school improvement plan and the data that you're collecting from the survey. Because I think that's like how for me in my mind, we close, like we made progress. We can demonstrate progress and you could give us the evidence that we're looking for when we're doing, you know, the evaluations for the superintendent and.
That is next week or next meeting. Stay tuned. Katie, get to come back.
Listen while on screen.
Just to save my full of the time, I'm going to bring this conversation to a close if that's okay? All right. So thank you, Dr. Boynton, for that exceptional amount of information. We're so grateful. We appreciate it.
I appreciate you doing it. Thank you very much.
Yeah. We'll see you next time.
Yes. On screen.
Hopefully, yeah, in the comfort of your own office. So guys, if there is no objection, I would actually like to move on the unfinished business that is on. I don't know if Dear J, this is not great for Dear J, but I feel like it's just too late at this point. And I want to move it to 28th and here's why. The subcommittee goals check-in, I'm going to actually send the chair people an email and you guys are going to respond just to me with the progress that you want me to enter into the spreadsheet. I'm just going to make the school committee goal check-in here quick. And I'll also sync up with our superintendent's format of evaluation presentation as well. So I think that kind of makes sense. The decision-making tool is actually embedded in one of those subcommittee reports. Maybe you can work that in in writing. Jackie, you can write it from the Dear J perspective and you can write it from the policy perspective. But the last thing we have on the agenda that I don't want to let go because we do want to see the second reading next time is just a first reading on policy, combining policy CHA and CHC, which is the last item under the business. So Amy.
Can I clarify something?
Yes.
So does that, so we're going to push the decision, the discussion of decision-making until next time, is that what you're saying? Okay. But you also want us to comment on it in the subcommittee goals?
Because I think it's embedded, right?
Okay.
Yeah. So this policy, Amy, anything that you need to know about this first reading here?
No, it's just a merge policy and the changes were really, some of the changes that we've been doing throughout, which is on gender, like the language that's being used, switching, you know, he and her, the day, parent or guardian, right? Some of those changes that we've been making throughout and just the combining of these two, the merging of these two policies.
Definitely. Any questions for policy that they can take back and then get ready for the second review? This one seems like a no-brainer and it is literally your grand finale, so.
It's the last one, yeah.
Thank you so much, Amy, and to the entire policy subcommittee for doing the, the amazing work here of getting through all of those. The last item here is just subcommittee advisory reports beyond what I just said. Is there anything that just really needs to be said in this meeting now?
I just, I would like to, we need to clarify when the communication subcommittee survey is going to go out. So we'd really like to get that done before the end of the second year.
Oh, cause you're going to put that in your subcommittee report. You're just going to share it that way?
Yeah. And I just would like to have it done this year so next year we can work with that data on our.
Didn't we share that at the last meeting? I'm sorry.
Yeah. We, I, but I, we just need to figure out how to push it out to the community.
Because you guys all gave us a thumbs up on pushing it out. And so Kirk, I think that this is something perhaps for the comment, the school committee communication survey?
I can do it.
And so Amy and I will touch base with you about that, or maybe just Amy can.
Yep. I can help. Sure.
Excellent. Yes.
Point of clarification for the agenda for next time.
Definitely.
So we will be reporting out, Dear J is also scheduled to present and it has come to my assumption that there is no representation of it available. So is the option to push to the fourth?
Does that mean that they are looking to get an extension?
They, yes.
Cause of their schedule?
Yes.
Yeah, like it's hard to get everybody together.
Correct.
So why don't you circle back to Dear J? Ask them if they want to present at our organizational meeting?
Yes.
With the new school committee, which may not be terribly new, but a little new.
Yep.
So, and if they want to do that on June 13th?
11th.
Fourth. Fourth.
Okay, so it's been changed so many times and I, that's the other point of clarification. I, I thought it was the 11th, but it's the fourth.
Oh my God. Why is it the fourth? So shouldn't it be like two, two weeks after?
You did some.
I'll, I'll get back to you guys on the date of that organizational meeting. I thought it was the 11th, but maybe I was wrong. So we can check.
I think on the calendar, it's the fourth.
It is.
It is.
So the planning calendar, oh, interesting. Okay. So more to come on that. But if Dear J wants to present at the organizational meeting, whether it's the fourth or the 11th, that's, that's probably fine by most of us. He would just have to, well, I guess Amy would wrap up the policy stuff and the decision-making tool and then you could carry it through to the organization.
If it was on the 11th.
Got it. Okay. So more to come on that, everyone. The only thing left on our agenda here are items for the next agenda. And as you might see, the May 28th meeting is pretty packed.
My, my chairs, just real quick.
Yeah.
As a, and for this, this comes as a school building committee update. Tomorrow evening's meeting has been canceled and rescheduled for the May 27th.
Thank you for remembering that. And while we're on it, there is a beam signing, isn't there, this Saturday? The top.
Yeah, the beam signing is this Saturday, 10 o'clock to noon.
Anybody can swing by Kirk if they want to hang out with you.
Anyone in our Nishoba towns that want to come by, alumni, whoever wants to come by and center of beam, we want to give you an opportunity to be back.
So stove folks will vote and then they will head over to the beam signing for the Nishoba double fun. Okay?
Love it. That was great.
Thank you for reminding me. That's, that was on that. So guys, that's the last thing we have tonight, so I'm going to move to adjourn. Do I have a second? Okay, Jackie. Uh, let's go around the room. John?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Robin?
Yes.
Amy Vessels?
Yes.
Amy Cullen?
Yes.
Myself? Yes, Sean Dorr?
Yes.
And Jackie?
Yes.
All right, everybody, we are out of here.